By him, I think that started.
Okay.
Or maybe him and then Bryce or something. Okay, we getting ready to rumble? I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting and the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Directors meeting to order. We will do the hospital first. May we have the roll call, please Denise?
Councilmember Cassidy? Are we doing the hospital?
Hospital.
I'm a trustee. Wait, are we doing roll call and the flag?
Roll call first or what?
Oh, I was gonna, well, I called them both to order at the same time. So...
Trustee Cassidy is present.
Can we have a redo? Is this for the hospital agenda or just to open the meeting?
I opened them both at the same time.
Like you do.
Okay.
That's the first for that, right? Well, then let's...
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
And Acting Chair this evening will be Mayor Marshall.
Thank you. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could just have a moment. Fortunately, I'm not aware of anybody who's passed away in the last couple of weeks, so that is good news, but I do believe that all of us know of numerous people that aren't doing as well as we are today, and so if we may have a moment of silence for them, wishing Please be seated. Okay, now we are on the Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. Are there any announcements? Written communications?
I have none.
There are no presentations. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for the trustees to accept comments from the public. No action will be taken on a non-agenda item, and speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Any comments on hospital business? Consent calendar?
There are two items on the consent calendar this evening for the hospital board. The first one is to approve the December 20, 2016 Hospital Board of Trustee Actions. Second one is the CEO's Board Report for January 2017 and the CFO's Report for December 2016. Recommended action is to approve the actions and to receive and file the reports.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 and 2 on the consent calendar.
Second.
Further comments? Call for the vote.
Four eyes and one absent, Mayor Protim Olson.
There is no general business. The Vice Chair has no reports. Any member reports?
I have none.
I'd like to just ask a question. Do we know what the state of affairs is with, let's see, counseling, family services provided for the community through the hospital? Is there anything they do? Because I know there was grant money that was pulled from that particular situation, and I think the city could probably use those service, social services. Do you know anything about that?
I don't right now, but that's a good question, and we can ask them for their mental health services. I know I've been reaching out to try to find, made a contact to get maybe some mental health workers there.
Right.
Actual people, you know?
Yeah.
But I don't know the status, so maybe we could have them report back to us on that?
Yes, that would be good. We need to figure out how we can get family services back in town and so that people can get help when they need it, in family counseling and mental health services, social services.
Yeah.
It's really good.
No, great.
Great.
So we can, we gave that to somebody?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we'll reach out to them.
If there's no other business, meeting's adjourned. We will go to the City Council meeting. And you need to take roll again?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Protim Olson is still absent.
Are there any announcements? From either the City Manager or...
I do have a report when you're ready for me.
Okay. Oh, well, then there's, well, okay, and written communications? I guess I don't know what the difference sometimes is between announcements and written communications and then the reports by the all of us as individuals.
Well, announcements, I think, would be like the Relay for Life is this weekend, or there's gonna be a race in town, and when Mr. Jenkins gives his report, it's more city events or...
Okay, then, okay, then announcements. I know there's an announcement out there from the library. I think sometimes they just ends up coming under oral communications, doesn't it? That's why I'm confused.
You could be, Annie.
I'm Judy Greer, 355 Descanso Avenue. I am with the Friends of the Library tonight. Want to remind you, on Tuesday, March 14th is our last digital seminar. Also want to remind you that you can go to the library anytime with your digital device and ask the librarian to help you figure out how to download books, magazines, movies, anything that you want. You don't have to physically go in the library once she has told you how to do this, and it looks pretty simple, so I encourage everyone to do this. But the next one is March 14th, and we will again give away a mini iPad. The other thing is March the 2nd, which is a Thursday, our own Dr. Laura Yulabari will talk in our health seminar, and she will discuss the issues that have to do with aging, I think, and she will talk on what osteoporosis is, for example, and she will answer questions. And this is really a good time, when you have a question and you're not sure who to ask, you know, come to one of these health seminars, and everyone there will either answer it there for you, or they'll be glad to talk to you afterwards. And that one is March 2nd, Thursday, 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock at the library again. And say hello to our new librarian. Her name is Morgan Pershing. She is just wonderful and will answer any questions and really, really does want to make a difference, so we're very happy that she is here. It's been two years since we've had a librarian, so it's very, very exciting. In the meantime, there's all the renovation being done in the front of the libraries. If you're not doing anything, you could just walk by and tell those guys they're doing a good job. Thank you.
And do you know what? Maybe we should, I introduced myself, but we should probably extend an invitation to her to come to a council meeting and be introduced, and so the entire community can see her.
Yes, and she does know that and will come. I think she's probably gone this weekend, but yes, in the future, she'll be here.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't know if you're hearing it, but there is like a radio or feedback or something. Does anybody else?
That noise?
It's what? It is so distracting.
Can we turn on the speaker?
Does anybody else hear it? Okay, I stopped my head, okay.
We're not talking, so you can't hear it, Bryce?
Is there... Oh. It's somewhere over here. Oh, I guess it's gone, it's gone now. Do you guys still hear it back there? I don't hear it up here as much anymore.
There it is.
Oh, is it you?
It's Ma.
Oh.
Ma.
Yeah, it's gone now. It's gone. Okay.
Wow.
Wow. Telepathic.
Okay. Are there any other announcements?
Yes, Mayor, I have one real quick, just as a follow-up from our first vehicle study session. Sorry, Dan. Our code enforcement have taken two ride-alongs with the local sheriffs, and I think a couple citations for court appearances have been issued for expired permits, our expired DMV tags, and insurance now is missing, and driver's licenses too, but anyway, so we've, the ball's rolling.
That's wonderful news. Thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tomorrow, we've got four spots left for our Catalina Tile Painting and Luncheon. We're taking 20 participants. We're at 16. We're gonna press tile, we're gonna paint tile, we're gonna have lunch out there. It's 11 o'clock, and we're gonna meet at Singing Waters in Carpool Out. So those that are 55 or older are more than welcome to join us, the next four that show up. Just a real quick update on the teen program. We've got a Wednesday, Friday, Saturday program, and we're running probably 20 to 30 kids per night in that program. It's running really well. We started a Thursday night, fourth and fifth grade, fourth and fifth grade program, kind of a pre-teen, and we're just kind of testing the waters with it a little bit. There were some activities in the church at the same time, so we're trying to fit in seamlessly with them. We're a couple of weeks into it, but we invite the fourth and fifth graders to come out from 6 to 9 on Thursday nights. We had a TAC meeting, ATAC, Avalon Teen Advisory Council Meeting, last week, where we're starting to talk about spring and summer programs, doing some activities, both in the interior as well as the possible excursion over town, so we're looking at some opportunities there. We're trying to put the finishing touches with the teens on a barbecue at the fire department, possibly this Friday if not. So the teens will go over the barbecue for the firefighters. Firefighters will do some mentoring with them, kind of show them around the station and what it takes to be a firefighter, have some dialogue there. And then we just installed a new hockey table there at the teen program as part of that social services grant, so the kids will get to enjoy that as of tomorrow. Youth sports, just real quick, we finished up flag football, had two championship games on Saturday, both within a touchdown, really good, kind of buzzer beater type game, so the way we'd like to see it, where the teams are real competitive all the way through. Dave is telling me he tracked about 80,000 feet steps on, over the weekend, of course the weekend for Saturday, Sunday, Monday, between flag football and Friday. Last week of soccer is this Sunday, and then we are taking registrations for youth basketball right now. We're taking those through Saturday, tryouts are on Saturday, so we look to get those interested in basketball signed up this week. And then just lastly, on the 13th, we did an NBA skills competition, junior NBA skills competition. We had about 30 participants come out for that. It was a qualifier for Thousand Oaks. Three kids in each of the divisions got to qualify and can go to Thousand Oaks. Thousand Oaks, it's a qualifier for a competition in New York. They'll take the five top in each of the Thousand Oaks divisions to New York, all expenses paid, so we hope to have a couple residents go over there and try their best at that. And then, I'm sorry, lastly, the flooding we had at the parking structure at 11 Golden Shore, the city has got a claim form available for damages that are $10,000 or less, so we're taking those through the 1st of March. The idea was to get those that are interested, we pull all those applications, all those submittals at the same time and send those along at the same time. Anything over $10,000, we have some information, how to contact them directly, some contact information. So that can be got at the front desk for claims of the flooding at the parking structure there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right?
Yes. And I have a call in to Assemblyman O'Donnell. It appears that if there's fault, it might be with Caltrans, so we're kind of taking that tact first, so...
Oh, short timer. Good evening. I wanted to remind you and the public that our CIP project, the big one that you all approved a while back, will be starting in a couple of weeks, actually, March 6th. To be in compliance with the CDO, as the cease and desist order, as we discussed, several manholes will be replaced, improvements to the pump stations, electrical services, and a lot of saltwater valves are gonna be replaced. It's starting in March 6th, so we'd like to alert the public that there's gonna be some inconvenience to travel, but it's gonna be started soon. So we appreciate your anticipated cooperation during the disruption of vehicular traffic. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for announcement. Any written communication?
I have none.
We're good? Okay, City Manager report?
I would just like to report, Mayor and Council, on one item. I received a message this morning from Rami Kalan, who is the Director of the Water Division for the California Public Utilities Commission. The City Attorney and I had met with him back on December 2nd. He had agreed to host a meeting between representatives of Southern California Edison and the city. He reaffirmed this morning that he would do that. Mr. Kalan will do that on the island. We have reached out to Edison, they have also agreed to a meeting, so we've reached out to them, and we are targeting a week when we can all come together. We're very appreciative of the support of the Public Utilities Commission to help us and Edison with the issues that we face in water, so it's good news.
Yeah, very good news. Okay, and City Attorney?
Nothing to report today.
Councilmember report? Who would like to start?
I have two quick items. Do we have an update on when we will see the RFP for the restaurant or facility?
Yes, you should, what I am struggling personally with is the dates, the time, the length of time the doc is prepared, basically. It's the length of time that it should be out, and although I told you a couple of weeks ago it would be within the two weeks, it was not, but it will be in the next week.
Okay.
And I will provide those to each member that you will have, and it'll be available that you can look at.
So would that be on the, are we expecting that on the next council agenda?
It would, and it would, yes, it well would be, but it'll also be in advance of that, so you'll have an opportunity to look it over, be sure that it's the intention that you have for that.
We're just getting so close to summer.
It is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then my second item, and I forgot my notes, so I apologize for that, but I wanted to say thank you to the mayor for reaching out to the county regarding women's services at the hospital and seeking some additional support and some resolution to that. Appreciated you sending that out.
That's it for me? Councilwoman Hernandez?
I'm good.
He's good? Councilwoman Sampson?
Absolutely. I have a few things I wanna run by everybody. I'm kind of, I want some updates on some things that, if you could take some notes, I appreciate it, David.
Yes, sir.
So, we were gonna get a bathymetric study done into the harbor to figure out exactly what's going on with our harbor, the sand movement, our retaining wall that separates the lower beach from the upper beach, and then the sand movement study. Other words, we got sand moving around that, the harbor either needs to be dredged and we need to take the sand from the harbor up onto the beach, but I don't think the 12-foot drop is a very safe thing for a wall from the top beach to the lower beach. It's absolutely unnecessary. There used to be fingers that went out right on the other side of the flood canal, the flood drain where it drains into the harbor, and the fingers went out and they stopped that erosion that winds up and putting all the sand down by the pier, and somehow it makes it out of the harbor. Back in the day, what they used to do is bring truckloads of sand and dump it down on the lower beach, and it used to stay there for an undetermined amount of time. But it was a step down. It was not more than 18 inches down, sometimes it would fluctuate, but the beach is the jewel of Avalon. That's what people come to do, is they go to the beach and they enjoy it. Right now, we got a fence up there, we got that big drop that goes down to the lower beach. It's a hell of a liability, it's a bad thing, and we need to get it fixed somehow. Is there any updates on the studies that were supposed to be done? And I think we budgeted money for that, right?
Yes, sir, you did. Mayor Mayor, Mr. Jake can give us an update on that.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
For this very reason, you approved a sedimentation study a few months back. It's in the process. Our engineers, we had an oceanic engineer and we had a PhD out in our bay a couple of weeks ago, taking measurements and doing all the requirement current studies. I believe the City Manager reported that it's gonna be between 45 and 60 days, and we're gonna have some answers on this study.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, okay, great.
I think he updated it in a management.
And will they, will they give us some recommendations? Do we have to go out and hire another firm to come in and give us some recommendations on what we can do, or these guys will probably outline some of the ideas that we...
No, you approved the study to give us recommendations, and that'll be the final recommendation.
Okay, great. So that should lead us to some kind of a conclusion, whether we can fix it or not. I just don't want that wall to fall down and the upper tier of the beach become the actual whole beach, which is...
Correct. Neither do I. Now, they're gonna provide recommendations. After that, you all have to decide what you want to approve to bring that sand back.
Okay, I see. Great, thank you for that update. Okay, so I've mentioned a few times that all this dirt that was put up at the stables up here is a hazard to the community, and it washes into the harbor, which I took some photographs of the last rain, and actually I stuck a pole down into the mud and it just went freely down in there several feet. So I don't think that the material that's up there is as stable as, I mean, the compaction may be maybe 95%, but I still don't feel comfortable without having K rails up along on the other, on the far side of the flood wash to keep all that mud from going into the flood canal and then down into the harbor, because then it's just our problem. And that's Island Company, the museum put all that there with the Island Company's consent. Somebody's gotta be responsible for that. It's above every single home and business in Avalon, and I think it's a liability. And I think if that mud washes down into the businesses and homes of Avalon, we're gonna have a problem with that. I don't, I don't see how we could oversee that. I don't think, I think when we start approving projects where we put thousands of tons of material upstream from the community in a FEMA-recognized flood plain, that's a problem to me, and that's in the 2030 general plan, and I'll show you that. I don't, I've got the plan here, but I'm not gonna get into that. I'm just saying, I was up there during the heavy rains, and I saw, you know, big canals being washed down into the harbor, so there is some erosion going on there.
Councilmember, may I just offer that I, after your comments earlier, went up and took a look at that, and those heavy rains, as you say, are creating, even in the most stable soil, it is creating that potential, that erosion, some of it. There is what they call wattle that's there, that is, if it rains more and there's more coming, we think, then that's gonna create a further problem, but we will certainly take a close, we're gonna take a close look at that, and I thank you for mentioning that.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Councilwoman Sampson, I hate to interrupt. I was gonna take some things out of order, and so if you don't mind, keep all your thoughts, you've got them there, right? So what I'd like to do, because somebody has to catch a boat, is have Southern California Edison give their presentation now. I apologize.
That's all right.
I was supposed to take it out of order and I stepped so...
Okay, that's okay, let's do this, yeah.
So keep your...
See what Jeff has to say.
Thank you. Jeff Lawrence, Southern California Edison, here to give you an update on our Stage 3 water rationing plan. So our most recent reservoir read was taken on last Thursday, February 16th, and the reservoir level measured at 292 acre feet. Within a week's time, we saw a 5 acre increase to the reservoir level, and then, as everyone knows, the next day, we had that significant rain event on Friday. So we're very optimistic with the survey results we're anticipating for this coming Thursday, to see what Friday storm brought us in terms of water in the reservoir. Since November 17th, the reservoir has increased by 171 acre feet, bringing our total reservoir again to 292 acre feet, about 27% of its overall capacity. And then, last City Council meeting, I announced our plans for an adjustment to the rationing levels within the Middle Ranch system effective immediately. So that includes customers in the city of Avalon and Hamilton Cove, and it also includes customers in Middle Canyon. So anyone fed in that Middle Ranch system, they're currently at 40 or 50% rationing levels. We're now rolling them back to 25%. And again, that is effective immediately. The rationing level letters are going to go out in early March, but because of Friday's rain event, we're optimistic that at the next council meeting, we're gonna have a favorable announcement to make. So in anticipation of that, we're gonna hold off on sending out those water allotment letters, because we may have further announcements to make, so. Preliminary results so far, coming back from the three-day weekend, do look good from Friday's rain events. In terms of the 25% rationing that will be in effect, allotment ceiling will remain in effect only for irrigation customers, so there won't be a ceiling for residential or commercial customers. And we want to stress that Stage 3 is still technically in effect, so even though we're rolling back the rationing level, the prohibitions and restrictions on non-essential water use are still in effect. At a later time, towards the end of rainy season, when we can assess the overall rainfall impacts to our water system, we'll make a determination on what stage of rationing or conservation we should be in. But we won't want to hold off on that to make immediate changes to the rationing level. In terms of timing, we ran ads in the newspapers last Thursday and Friday to get the word out, and as a follow-up to the announcement we made at the last City Council meeting. And then, for the water allotment letters, when they do go out, they will be based on customers' approved variances, if they had submitted one to us in Stage 2 or Stage 3. So we're not just taking all their customers and rolling them back to 75% of their baseline usage. We're gonna use the most up-to-date information that we have. So it'll be based on the Stage 2 or Stage 3 variance if a customer has one. I will also be reaching out to local stakeholders, including our customers in the interior, letting them know on our rationing plans there as well. We continue to assess all the water systems on the island, not just Avalon, to seek opportunities to adjust the rationing level. And at this time, we do still want to stress the need for conservation. We're hoping for a favorable reservoir reading this Thursday, but it's still not gonna bring us up to the capacity of the reservoir. We are slowly transitioning out of our Stage 3 rationing plan, hopefully, with the rain that we're getting this winter, but the need to conserve is still there. It'll take a considerable amount of time before we're completely out of the drought, this historic drought that we're experiencing.
It's too bad we can't partner with Orville.
Anybody for that matter.
So we've been in Stage 3 now since early September. About four months of time has gone by, and we're seeing very favorable results in terms of the community's rationing efforts to preserve our groundwater resources. For the month of January, customers reduced their water use by just about 47%, while visitor counts went up almost 42%. So a real staggering visitor count increases and rationing results. For the four months that we've been in Stage 3 water rationing, we've reduced water use by 50%, which is the target for our Stage 3 rationing plan. For most of the island, 40 to 50% is the mandated rationing, so the community has responded where we would hope we would be to preserve our groundwater resources, and that's why visitor counts have gone up 45% in the same four-month period. So we've been able, just in four months' time, been able to reduce our water use by 56 acre feet. What you're looking at here is a breakdown of commercial and residential water use, where you have, 2015 is kind of a comparison year, and then rolling 12-month period in the column on the right, and we're comparing water use to our baseline period, and reporting to the rationing results for each of those customer classes. In 2015, residential customers reduced their water use by 43%, and in the last 12 months, they're at 47% reduction, so a slight improvement over what we experienced in 2015. For our commercial customers, during 2015, they reduced water use by 41%, and they're very consistent on the, in the last 12 months as well, reducing water use by 40%. So both customer classes have been really working hard to reduce their water use. What this is showing you is a volumetric measurement of water use for commercial and residential customers. For January 2017, residential water customers use 5 and 1/2 acre feet of water, and commercial customers use 5.6 acre feet of water. So very equi... So, very equivalent water use, which is typical of what we see in the wintertime. And as we get into the spring and summertime, that's when we see the commercial use go up considerably higher than our residential use.
And a quick question. And when you talk about the acre feet, is that using D cell water and reservoir water?
Yeah, that's a sales number.
But it is a combo of both? Combination, I mean, or we're not drawing any, I mean, were we still drawing, are we using any, other than for Hamilton Cove and the other places? Are any, any of the reservoir water being used here or are we just using D cell?
Through, I wanna say, going back to September, October timeframe, we've managed to send very little water from Middle Ranch into the D cell system, right? So, most of the water coming down, that we're losing from the reservoir is either from environmental factors or from Hamilton Cove use.
Can I just clarify? I know we've asked this question a couple of times. When you're delineating between commercial and residential, do vacation rental homes fall under residential or are those under commercial?
It's mixed. So, it's really contingent upon a homeowner notifying us when their use changes. And so, if they don't call us to notify us, the rate could be a residential rate.
Okay.
I would, I would, I believe most of them are probably on a residential rate, is what I suspect.
Okay.
This chart here is showing you our compliance to Stage Two and then also Stage Three for the last four months. We added this orange line here, the top line, which measures overall compliance. And I apologize, I know the numbers are pretty small here. For the month of January, overall compliance to Stage Three water allotments was at about sixty-seven percent. In other words, about thirty-four, thirty-three percent of our customers exceeded their water allotment, which was a significant spike over what we'd experienced in the first three months of Stage Three. The red line is the number of customers that received a second violation, two or more violations. And that was about twenty-five percent of the bills that closed during that month of January. And then, the blue line are the customers that received a warning, a first-time warning, and we're hovering just under one percent.
So, you're saying six-hundred-and-twelve violations, is that total or just the month of January? Is that, is that an, that's not, that's just for one month? Six-hundred-and-twelve violations?
Yeah, six-hundred-and-twelve violations out of about nineteen-hundred bills that closed for that month. So, about a third of the customers had a violation in January. Exceeded their water allotment in January.
That's interesting.
Uh-huh.
Wow, I don't know why, but it's interesting.
Well, it's interesting because, and, 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 don't, don't respond, just hear my comment. What's interesting is the fact that we can't make it on Phase Three. We need to be, we need to be able to have water. I mean, we, as much as we have conserved all these years, as much as we still conserve six-hundred-and-twelve violations out of nineteen-hundred customers, that's just, we need to fix it.
And that's a month when it rained.
Yeah, it was a spike over the first three months of what we had seen in Stage Three. In Stage Two, we ran at about six to eight percent of the customers would exceed their water allotment.
Yeah.
This is a, quite a spike for the month of January. What you're looking at here is a summary slide of our drought mitigation plan. These are a number of things that were reported previously that are in flight. As everyone knows, we are completing a study on a desalination enhancement project and we're targeting a March twenty-first presentation to the council from our desalination expert. And we're also seeking grant funding that's available for water infrastructure improvement projects. And there's a number of grant opportunities that are out there that I'll update you on the subsequent slide. As City Manager Jenkins also mentioned, we are working with the California Public Utility Commission to have a joint water meeting with the city staff. And I believe sometime in early to mid-March is what we're targeting.
March sixth, the week of March sixth, I think.
Week of March sixth.
Where's that gonna be? Up north?
It'll be in Avalon.
Oh, in Avalon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will the council be invited to that and the public?
Actually, I think it's going to be a, it's not gonna be, it's a public vetting at one point of the meeting. I think there's gonna be some conversation between the lawyers and so on. But certainly, I'll pass that on to Mr. Kalan, who is taking time from San Francisco to come down because he is, he and his division with CPUC is very interested.
Or at least have a couple of members of the council be able to speak in for the general public. I'd appreciate that.
I always, I always am happy to see my council members.
Yeah, I'd like to participate in that if I could, but that is if I'm selected out of the council members. I don't mind, I just want a couple of us to be there so we can, so we can stress what our stresses are and what our priorities are. Can I ask you a question on this? I don't know if you're going through each item on this, but it says groundwater management and sustainability program?
Mm-hmm.
What does that include? It says monitor remote island systems to proactively identify, prioritize, and implement system enhancement to mitigate running out of water. What does that mean? I mean, does that mean you're gonna, you're gonna look for more water somewhere or are you gonna drill deeper wells? Are you gonna try to exploit more wells?
So, that program specifically was installing transducers, essentially monitoring equipment in most of our production wells or monitoring wells throughout our water system. So, that we, we now, on our rounds in the interior, collect real-time data in terms of what the underground hydrology is doing.
Right.
And so, we have better data on what the water elevations are to be able to monitor the impacts to the drought on our water system.
I appreciate that because I don't want to dry up any more wells. I think our natural resources have to be sustained. And when we get to the point to where we start drying up wells, we need to take real precautions with that because then we're destroying our natural resources and that's out of the question. We can't do that. We can't leave that for future generations, salty wells, you know, that were once, yeah, so...
This data provides critical information for doing just that, as well as providing operations with the data that they need to run the water system.
Great.
There are a number of other infrastructure improvement projects that are in various stages, either preliminary engineering or feasibility studies. We, once they're at a stage where they've been, preliminary engineering is completed, we have estimates, and they've received the internal approvals that we need, we will get them on this slide and update the council and the public as soon as possible. But there's a number of projects, not all of them will come to fruition, but we know some of them will. And so, at the appropriate time, we'll be able to add those additional projects to this update as well. So, as I mentioned before, there are a number of grant opportunities that are out there from the governor's drought order. The first slide here are grant opportunities that we've already applied for. And so, since the last council meeting, there's three grants we submitted applications for. They're all U.S. Bureau of Reclamation grants. The first one was a Watersmart grant for monitoring equipment for our water system. The second one is a grant for drought resiliency projects. And this one is a component of the desalination study that we're doing. And that's bringing in a half-million gallon storage tank into Avalon. And that's part of a phased approach to an overall D cell enhancement project, which we'll share the information with you on at that March twenty-first council meeting.
Mayor, may I? And Jeff, we've had some offline conversations. You've indicated that corporate is going to make a presentation of its capital improvements at the March twenty-first meeting of the council and we are scheduling that matter. Yet, we don't know the specifics of what those capital, yet Edison is applying for grants for specific components of those, some of which, which we were not notified of. What I've been told by Leslie Cleveland from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation is that she would like us to collaborate in advance on projects that are being submitted because what I was told, and I have no rubs or skin, except to say, skin the game, except to say that, that if it's going to affect Avalon, then it's going to take the approval of the city before they will fund those projects. That's, and, so, if you're applying for, if SCE is applying for capital improvements, you know what they are now. Tell us what they are now so we can evaluate those against the advice that we've gotten from Corolla engineers and others. And that would, and maybe that might be something that you might wanna discuss with your, with your corporate people. So, thank you, Mayor.
Along those lines, Mr. Jenkins, we had a collaborative effort with your staff seeking all available grant funding opportunities where the scope of these applications were discussed and were directed to discontinue that effort.
Well, if you wanna talk about that, I would be happy to, again.
What staff members spoke of this? If you don't know about it, what staff members were there?
This was, this was a few months ago. The idea is to get the plan first. The idea is before you apply in municipal water systems is you have a plan in place about what infrastructure is needed. And then, what you do is you match the infrastructure against available, what might be available grants. And what, what we learned, and this is a repeat of something that's already been said publicly, and we'll say it again, is that, is that they were working on grants other than those that would impact the city of Avalon, which the council has said, based on direction given to the city attorney previously, prior to Mike joining the team, that, and what we were, so, so there was, there was, there was work on a whole host of things, but they weren't focused on Avalon first. And that's where that rub, that's been explained in writing, it's been explained to Mr. Frey, it's been explained publicly and to the council, that if you're applying for grants... Oh, and by the way, at the time that, where I learned about it, was at a meeting, a joint meeting, when I first arrived, that I knew nothing about. So, all I'm saying is that I think when you apply for grants, you know what the projects are, the capital projects. The city councils asked for those capital projects in advance, and now you're saying that you're applying for grants and yet you won't tell them what the grants, you won't tell them what the capital improvement needed until March twenty-first. I'm not saying you personally, but that's the issue. And that's the issue that Mr. Frey's been told. That's the issue that PUC's been told. That's the issue that municipal entities throughout California do, that you come up with a plan first. And, and that's what we hope that we can bring our arms around so that we can work on limited state funds. And you spoke of a five-hundred-thousand dollar, five-hundred-thousand gallon tank in, in Pebley Beach, I believe, in one of the applications that Senator Allen sent us. And we don't think that's sufficient. So, that's where I think our conversation will be productive when we do have that conversation.
Yeah, and we look forward to having that conversation. And the half-million gallon storage tank, as I said before, it would be a staged approach to an overall desalination system enhancement. We can't just get funding for new seawater wells, upgrading our plant number one, additional storage in Avalon at a million to two-million gallon tank. There isn't funding available for that project. So, we're talking about a long-term enhancement project. And the storage option, there's multiple tanks that could be installed to provide storage. So, a half-million gallon tank is phase one of the enhancement that would maximize production from plants number one and two. And then, there are other phases to a D cell enhancement project that would include additional storage, once seawater wells and upgrades to the D cell plant come online. So, it's a phased approach that we wanna share with you when we have the opportunity.
And that would be, Madam Mayor of council, forgive me for this, but that would be the interesting thing, is this is part of a, a phase that would, that would involve other infrastructure improvements in a period of time. And that would be, as you say, useful information to inform the council and public about what the ultimate end game is on this, not just what the pieces are. And that's what we're looking for, I think, to know what the total picture is. And thank you for that information.
Absolutely. And with any type of collaboration with the, your staff as well, the focus of that would be grants for Avalon. Our staff would pursue grants island-wide, but the focus of the grants that we were looking at with the staff was to benefit Avalon.
Thank you.
So, the three grants have been submitted in the past month or so, and then we continue to monitor a number of other grant opportunities that are out there.
It's, can I, can I please cut you off for a second? On that last slide there, it says fifty percent shared cost. Is that the cost to the city for those grants? Or is that the cost to Edison for those grants? Or is that, is that a capital improvement cost that's gonna be passed on to the ratepayers?
So, that, that would be a matching requirement that would need to be passed on to the ratepayers at some point in time.
Okay. And there was three of them and they were all fifty percent?
Unless there were some opportunities with disadvantaged community designation, sometimes that matching requirement can be alleviated or minimized.
That would be the benefit of working with the city because we might be able to qualify for that. And I know, and I know our attorney and David will definitely pursue any type of breaks we can possibly get with, with the help of the council and the approval of the council. We're gonna push for that, whatever we can get because that, those costs, you know, you're talking about like almost a million dollars and so it's a five-hundred-thousand dollar cost that's gonna be passed on to the ratepayers, which just means more higher water rates. We already have the highest water rates in California just about here, so it's, we're gonna try to keep that down.
And that's why we wanna seek grant funding opportunities for as many of these capital improvement projects as we can to minimize the impacts to our ratepayers.
Well, that was part of the grant, though. And the grant said it's a matching grant. Other words, you get the grant, but you still gotta pay half of, the ratepayers still have to pick up that extra money. I mean, maybe the city can get a grant where we don't have, where we don't, and maybe you can work with the city and we don't have to pay that extra five-hundred-thousand or million dollars that, that it says that we're supposed to pay here.
We would certainly like to explore those opportunities.
Okay, so, whatever happened to the study that you guys did? This expert came out and did the study and we're supposed to get the reason? That's March? Okay, so that's coming up. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And then, on the next slide of grant opportunities that we're monitoring, actually, the first section there, those three rows are the ones that we are in planning on and awaiting preliminary draft guidelines. And the most critical one there is the Proposition One Desalination Grant from the Department of Water Resources. We were expecting those guidelines at the end of last year and they've been delayed and we're, we continue to seek an update on when those guidelines will be published, but haven't been able to get one so far.
And if, then it says that the city is the lead on that, it really is imperative that we get the staffers together, working on that. Because I mean, if those comes out with your plan, whatever, here in March, and then with that and whatever, I mean, because then it's gonna be, then it's gonna, then they're just gonna give everybody a couple of months to do their proposals, probably. I mean, I don't know, have they even put the guidelines out where people can comment on the guidelines or they haven't even had that with you yet?
No, not yet. All we know are what the guidelines were in previous stages of the grant.
Yeah, they're still working on, once, once the bureaucracy of the state is finished with the guidelines, then there's the public comment period on those guidelines. And so, they're not there yet.
Yep, this drought was an emergency, wasn't it? Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
And so, those are the ones that are in various stages of planning. And then, we have four other grant opportunities that we're tracking as well. California Energy Commission, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, U.S. Department of Agriculture, and Federal Drinking Water Safety and Infrastructure Act to see if there's opportunities for any of the projects we're considering there as well.
Just as a note, what I hear Jeff saying is not only are there state funds, but it's the importance of a large appropriation of federal funds that is now, was passed by the last Congress and the anticipated, I'm not gonna go into the other topic, but yet at this meeting, but it's those anticipated infrastructure resources that we have to be looking at on a federal level too, in addition to those that we look at a state level to bring down the cost of infrastructure to the ratepayer.
Yeah.
So, that concludes my presentation, but I have one other announcement to make on behalf of... behalf of Adeline Young from our local Public Affairs Department. And in partnership with the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce, we'd like to invite our community, our customers in the food service and hospitality community to attend an energy efficiency workshop tomorrow. There's going to be two sessions, one's at 9:30 and the other one's at 5:30, and that's going to be held at the Holiday Inn Resort. So, we invite everyone to come and attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, Jeff, for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, with all the water going into the reservoir now, hopefully, we're getting quite a bit, is there a way that we could test all the silt, the stuff that goes into the reservoir, so we have an accurate count of the real water that's in there? Is there a way to test that at all?
You mean the water quality?
Yeah, the just the water, just just the depth of the water.
You're talking about the volume?
The water goes in, the silt sits on the bottom, how deep, how much is really in there, the water?
Oh, I see.
Because the silt takes up part of the reservoir, correct?
Yeah.
Is there a way to test that? So, we have the silt here than the water on top. It looks like it's full, but it might not be. Is there a testing procedure that you guys have?
We have done studies in the past on that to assess how much water is in that silt. And so when we take the elevation of the surface water and we convert that to acre footage, we also assume a certain rate of water in that silt and convert it to a volume of water in that reservoir.
That converted silt.
Yeah, it's 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 it is factored in in our current conversion that we do.
And you have somebody on staff that's an expert in that, right?
We had a study done, and so the results of that study give give us the the appropriate conversion rate. And so it there is a large volume of water in that silt. And that is that is factored into the the volume of the water in the reservoir.
Okay. And then my next question, did Mr. Hyde ever accept our invitation to come to the council meeting?
So, we're actually looking at a community outreach program, and I think the the venue is being assessed now. And and one of the possible venues is is a council meeting to have Ron come and attend. And so we are working on that that outreach plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions in the community? Jeff, thank you, and.
Thank you.
Getting you out of here on time to catch the boat. Okay. Oh, back to Councilmember Sampson.
Okay, I have a few items here, so I'm going to try to get through this as quickly as I can. I was going to ask the council if you would support me on this. I'd like to write a letter to the city of Whittier. Officer Ken Keith Boyer was killed, I think, two days ago. He went to help some people at an intersection. I used to live in Whittier, right on that corner where that happened. It's really sad. He's a 27-year veteran. I'd like to like if we could write a letter to the city of Whittier and just give him our condolences and let him know that we our heartfelt condolences go out to them because it's a sad thing. I think that was a terrible thing. The police chief, Jeff Piper, wanted to let the voters and politicians know that collectively you let this officer down by voting for measures 48 and 58, I believe they are, by letting people violent people like this out of jail in California. So, instead of building more jails, we just let more people out on the street like this and it and it puts honest people like this at risk. So, I think it's a sad thing, and our condolences go out to him and his family. Okay, so my next question.
I'm okay with that, write a letter.
To his family and to the.
To the city, basically to the police chief and to his family and just let them know that the city of Avalon is is definitely saddened with them with their loss and by their loss. So, the next thing, because there was LA County sheriffs that responded to that as well, and that's our that's our police force as well. Okay, Pebley Beach, the fencing and K rails at Pebley Beach Road, this is the next thing. I noticed that last big rain, we lost 46 sections of fence. Do we have grant money for every time we have to replace those fencing sections? Can you 46 sections, that's an awful lot of sections of fence, and then we have to pay for the labor to have them installed? So, I'm just I'm just saying, if it costs $2,000 for each section and we lost 46 of them, you're talking $72,000. That's just my my estimate, but can you tell me how much it costs for those sections?
Yeah, it's about $45 a foot, and we didn't lose, how many sections did you say?
I counted 46 that were damaged or needed to be replaced.
Others, no, there's probably about 15 that we have lost completely. There's some that are bent, and we're in the process of ordering some more.
So, what do you what how much are they each? I mean.
$45 per foot, they're 20-foot long, so 900 bucks.
900? And then to to install them back, to reinstall them, it's another maybe $1,000 each? I don't know. What do we what do they charge us for that?
No, actually installed, they were $100 per panel.
Really?
Yeah.
$100, $100 is all that Jorals Construction charges us to?
Yes, per panel, yeah.
I'm shocked.
That was prevailing.
I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that bill. I'd like to I'd like to see.
I'd be happy to show you all the paperwork, Councilman.
Okay, that'd be great. I just want to know, where does that money come from? So, every time it rains and the rocks fall down, there's.
The original contract was successor agency money, didn't cost the city. I don't know the exact.
Okay, but we but as as we go on, we're going to need to replace those, correct?
We have another 10 panels at the warehouse, plus we're next in two weeks, we're coming to the council to purchase another 20 panels.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Okay, because there's a lot, there's a lot of them damaged. I counted 46 of them damaged, maybe they were reusable, obviously they were, if you're saying they were.
Were you counting 20-foot panels?
Yeah, I was counting the entire sections and each one that I counted was damaged. It was it was every I counted 46 of them, 30 of them looked real bad, and then, you know, the other 16 were pretty bad. So, I I'm just wondering what the cost to the city is going to be as we move on because that was a parsac, parsac made us put that fence in, correct, so that we could actually use that road? So, I just wanted to make sure that the community has an idea of how much we're spending on that, by the way.
Councilmember, may I, Mayor, may I, just just to say this part of that, that the the K rail and the fence provide a measure of protection. What you are seeking, what this council is seeking, is additional protection, which would be more in line with a wall that would that would of the length of which would protect from those higher elevation rocks from coming down jumping. And that, again, is something where you're looking at a few million dollars for for a wall such as that that would provide maximum protection. And again, that's where we are looking for money either through metro transit, which we've had communication, or through through other state programs and through federal to see if we can come up with that that money to build a wall that would provide the greatest amount of protection. We have protection, but this would be the greatest amount of protection.
Didn't we have some lobbyists from BBK that were going to represent us in Washington?
Well, we will have that. We we need to do a little more preparatory work, and we'll have it on your next agenda.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item I have on here is the freight lines has, we haven't had a barge in five days. I'm wondering, like, how can we go five days without food? I mean, this is ridiculous. There's we got a milk, things like eggs, staples requirements, there's a lot of different baby products that are we're out of, things that are absolutely necessary for this community. We should in no way, shape, or form go five days without a barge, okay? Last barge was Thursday, and and it's the water's been calm since Sunday. They could have sent a barge on Sunday. I'm wondering, you know, we fought real hard for competition in the freight lines. I've done a little a little bit of reaching out here, and I'm understanding that, you know, we could if we had competition in our freight lines, we could have had somebody else running food over here so we don't have to run out. If we we need to write a letter to the freight lines and allow them to understand that we're not pleased with this. I'm not pleased with it, and I know a lot of people have reached out to me and said, this is ridiculous. How can we how can we possibly go five days without food? I mean, if there was competition there, this would have happened. This is the whole reason why I fought so hard and and lost for this for this competition, just just so that there's a balance there. And people want to compete to provide a public utility to us that is efficient and effective and and is also safe and, my God, man, I don't I don't get that. That doesn't make sense to me. They they wanted the monopoly, they got it, and and they they made the commitment, and they're not fulfilling their commitment and their responsibility to the community. And I am, I'm not bad, I'll just say I'm not happy about it, that's all. I'll try to hold in my real thoughts because I was going to make a couple of phone calls today, and I'm glad I didn't because someone would have got a face full of me, and that's not a good thing when I'm not happy. The Vaughn site, next thing is, has Vaughn's reach out to anybody on our staff and let us know that they're going to start doing something for the community? Are they still sitting on their hands?
Jenna, Jenna Wilkinson, she has did communicate, she said that they they had a recent conversation which with the with the a conversation about the next steps, including the timeline, they're supposed to submit that timeline, we haven't yet received it, a timeline for construction. The first thing they have to do, of course, is address those issues that were that were in the conditions that the council set at that meeting. And one of those, of course, of a lot of interest is the windows and the 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 soundproofing, and that's that has to but but what I was appreciative of is that at least there is now communication again, and they're sharing information. What the dates are, I don't know.
There's there's a communication in an area I don't want to go, which is construction. They don't they don't get it, they don't get to make any plans for anything until they put those windows in and they start talking to people in the area and giving them what they need because that was the first thing, that was the first, you know, order that we had mandated mandated for them to do. And the condition of approval was that we needed windows. So, they're still not doing what we need them to, although communication is it's it's hurts, it like hurts them to communicate with us for some reason. I don't I don't get it. I'd like to thank the Conservancy for fixing the road so quick, Mark Saldana and Evan Sutherland. Those guys are amazing out there, and they do some amazing work, and they get those roads open so people from the Isthmus can come into town and and get their necessities here in Avalon. And if there's ever an emergency, which there was, the school bus got stuck, and Mark and Evan, they went to the rescue, the school bus, and got the kids to safety and got the school bus out of there. So, I just want to appreciate the Conservancy there and just all the great work that they do out there, so good thing. Has anybody communicated with the county supervisor? Can we meet with her sometime?
Yes, if if I, Mayor, did you want, she, Elinda Chico is her field representative. She's a former council member, actually, in a, I believe in Signal Hill or in anyway, she's she's the field rep. She came to the chamber board meeting, the last meeting.
Okay, great.
She wanted to be here tonight, and the mayor had told me that because of weather conditions, there was concern and but but she said that she will be here. She is very interested in the community, supervisor is planning an event, she wants to plan to be here.
Okay, good. We want to meet her staff, we want to meet her, we want the community to meet her. I know she's got 26 other cities that she or 25 other cities she needs to do the same thing she does with our community, but it's it's important because people here, we rely on the county supervisor's office for a lot of our needs. Okay, thank you for that update. I appreciate that, Mayor. Actually, the mayor told me that she met with Elena, and she had a nice day with her, and I appreciate that. But she's not fond of the ocean.
And she doesn't eat seafood.
Okay, has anybody, I'm sorry I'm taking so long, you guys, but I'm not, I just there's these things are important in the community needs, we all need to hear these, and we need to hear them right here live. I don't like saying having all these discussions behind closed doors, and nobody knows what's going on. So, that's what I'm trying to do here. The sheriffs, we're supposed to get a new sheriff in town, lieutenant, as captain. Does has anybody had any communications with Jim McDonald or his understudy that is supposed to appoint somebody here? And do we have a say-so on this? I mean, some some kind of, can we have some interaction with this person that's going to come and 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 provide law enforcement to our community? Because I'm I'm I think that with Captain Doug Federall here, we've had a sheriff's department that was a cut above the rest of any others we've ever had, and I want to make sure that we don't get too far off of that. And if we're going to dictate anything to the new sheriff, I want to make sure that it's cohesive with the community that we live in, which is not a violent community like what they're dealing with over there. It's a lot different here. We have to look at each other, live with each other, and we want our kids to be safe, and we also want them to be on the right track. And the sheriff's department seemed to be able to do that. There's a lot of people work three jobs, the kids are out late, sometimes they're out unsupervised. The sheriffs have picked up, you know, this 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 brothering program that usually goes on in communities, which nonprofits usually actually pick up this thing with the Big Brother program. The teen center does a good job with that, but we want to make sure. So, does anybody, has anybody met him or do we know?
We will meet him tomorrow at 2:00. He is just coming over for 2:00, I believe, and he was going to come in. He is, I don't know if I should, I guess I use his name, it's Lieutenant Hawking. And and though I still understand, the issue will be, is that satisfactory to the city council ultimately in that in this is a gentleman who they referred, they didn't, they originally, you had talked about having multiple people come over.
Right.
And what the undersheriff, whose name I? Bennett, yeah, Denham, yes, Mr. Bob Denham, had had has mentioned one name, and but but you were the ones who ultimately, in my view, would be the ones who would say yea or nay, and.
It's important because we have a contract with them, and they work for us. So, it's important that we are okay with this because we've had some sheriffs that were not good for this community.
And I think what the council had said, sorry, sir, I, the council had said that you wanted to be sure that tone of law enforcement is what you and the community wanted to be.
Absolutely. We want to see it. We want to we want to see it over a period of time, but I mean, first impressions go a long ways as well, so. Okay, my last item here is the casino site. So, there's an easement between our fuel dock and the casino, and it's an easement that was actually, we don't know when it was established, it's when Sugarloaf was torn down, but but I've got some information from Dennis and from a trust title company that shows that the title with that easement that we pay for, or we're going, we're supposed to pay for it with the island company because it's a small awkward triangular piece of land that was established, the last trust I saw was in 1965, and it was from Helen Wrigley to the Santa Catalina Island Company, and she sold it to them for $20, two $10 payments, I believe it was 20 or 200, it wasn't, it wasn't much. But my but but the title that I wanted was how the city relinquished the high tide line to the to the Wrigleys, that is. We want to see where that title is, and until that title is shown to the community, we shouldn't pay for the rent on that place. That's a point that I was trying to make was they're showing us a map that's from 1930 along with a document from this title company that's from 1913. So, there's no map from 1913 that shows the high tide line, and when they exploded Sugarloaf, they pushed it out. The high tide line was back, which was probably back where the road is even more more so, which was which means that was city property, which means we're paying for something that could be city property. And until we see the title on that, I think we should hold off and allow and mandate that they that the island company comes up with that paperwork, that information, that quitclaim deed or that trust, so that we understand exactly where the tide lines are and when they were and when the city actually relinquished that property to the Wrigleys. That's my last.
So, may I just ask what you're asking really for, Mayor, just as a history of title, the history of the title to the thing, and that would take a title report, I believe, and to which is about, it's about $1,500, I believe it's about $1,500.
Whatever it is, we're paying thousands of dollars.
Yes.
How much is how much rent do they want to charge?
Well, it's $50,000, I believe, that accelerates in five years, and correct me, Mizrahi, if I, to 135,000.
Okay, 135,000? And if we've been paying that for a long time, and that's actually our property, believe me, somebody owes somebody something here.
Yes, sir.
And we they owe the city some. And they owe the city some money, if that happens to be, actually, that high tide line happens to go back before Sugarloaf was built. Because you can look at maps and partial maps, and we haven't, we've had some people study this, and I've got some information that shows deeds up to 1965, there's one in 1948, but there's not one that says the city gives you this for this much money. It doesn't exist right now. It may be out there somewhere, but if it doesn't exist, I don't think we should have to pay for it. Because it's actually, that was, that was a tide line that went beyond where the tide line is, where the high tide line is now. So, I want to be able to understand that a lot more, and I don't think it's the city's responsibility to come up with these deeds. They have to show us that, yes, this is, this is when the city actually relinquished title to this area, and this is the map. We don't need a map from 1930, because that's after Sugarloaf had already been exploded, and pushed out, and then they built the casino on top of that. We need a map from before Sugarloaf was demolished.
So, I just have a question, because it's a little confusing to me. And I guess I'm asking the city attorney, or whomever. Can I just ask, does that make sense?
I don't, the only thing I don't know is if the city ever owned that land in the first place.
And how did we find that out?
Well, you do a title search, to see, you started doing a title search, to see if they can find the documents that cover that area, and see if there is anything. There may not be, there may not be anything there.
I thought the city started that about eight months ago.
Like, two years ago.
No, we paid to have that, that one.
We had a survey done, yes.
Survey, but not the title.
Yes, ma'am.
It was survey, not title.
All he came up with was a deed from 1965, and, you know, so, I just want to bring this to light, because there's a lot of money in exchange here, and the city owns the high tide line around Avalon, I mean, the high tide line is public property. So, and the city owns the harbor, right? The harbor is the city's, the state lands commission, which is in a trust to the people of California.
We manage the, we manage the tide lands inside the bay for the state of California, but we are the manager, directly the manager of those lines, on behalf of the state of California.
Okay. Okay, so we're doing them a favor. So, what we need to do is do ourselves a favor, and understand exactly what happened there, and have it explained to us in a document, or explain to us that, no, there's no documents that exist, and if that's the case, then maybe we're paying for something that is actually something that is ours. Let's figure out what it is, and hold our money until, you know, we know what we're paying for. Because it's their money that we're spending, you know, so. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Well, I don't know that we can actually, just, I don't know that we can actually withhold that money, right?
We have a lease with them.
Right. So we can't, so, and if something came up, then they just have to pay us back.
Within four years.
Oh, okay.
Within four years?
Four years back.
Really?
Reach contract, four years.
Okay, well, we better get on it and find out what's going on, so. And I've already, you know, you've already sent me some information, Dennis did, and I'm not quite convinced yet. I'm really not, I haven't seen anything that is beyond 1965, and then there's something in 1948 that happened, but I didn't get any documentation from that, so. And I've only seen maps from 1930, what happened before 1930. And was it, what is state lands then? I think the state lands commission started in 1889 or something, so, it was state lands back then, you know, so. Let's go on. I'm done.
That's it, Councilman? Go on, come on. I love you.
Moving on.
Okay, let's move, Mayor Report. Yes, Elinda Chico came, the field deputy for Supervisor Hahn, she was delightful, she was a very good listener, she was very observant. We're driving through town, and I said, well, I don't know if you saw this play equipment. I mean, she knows, and she's gonna relate to the supervisor, that Janice Hahn has a lot of work to do, because Don Kanabi was so generous to us, that she's got some big shoes to follow, to walk in. But it was wonderful, we did have a meeting before the chamber board meeting, and some people from the community came, I was glad to have them out there. We talked about immigration, environment, education, mental health services, other social services, and just a lot of, and tried to get a feel for where she was coming from. She knows, she's only been, had the office for three months, but she's so happy she's out of, out of the big world, and into this world that maybe change can be made, where she didn't see that on the big hill. So, Elinda says, any issues we have, she's right there for us. So that's really, really great. I had the opportunity to go to a talent show about a week ago, Friday, the one up at the school, it was incredible. And also, I went to the recital at Singing Waters, and we've got some very talented young people in this town, and from piano playing to singing, to dancing, and anyways, they're gonna do it again next year. So, we're also talking about expanding it, and maybe we can get different civic groups to participate, and they can volunteer a singer, or a dancer, or whatever, to make a larger community event. Anyway, that was the PTAs program. So, that's it. Okay, oral communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak, to speak on non-agenda items, no action will be taken, and we like to limit you to three minutes. You know the routine.
And I'm just gonna put my two cents in, that the three minutes is really not a fair limitation at this point. There are maybe three or four people that come up and speak, I mean, when you have items on the agenda, and you have 20 people, I can understand it. But generally, the people that come up to speak in the, just the general thing, it's not that long, and three minutes is really a restriction. I'm gonna try to get it, but what happens is I just end up talking so fast that nobody can understand what I'm saying. On, I'm just gonna start with the Edison presentation, and I just have to say that this is more of the same of what we've seen for three years now. It's not just three months, it's three years. And DWR is not gonna help you. They've come here before, they've made it clear, they have a very tight relationship with Edison, they like to keep that good relationship, they're giving you lip service, and if you can't tell that by the fact you asked for a meeting on December 2nd, and they're getting back to you February 21st, then you really need to, I think, clean your glasses off, because we are being
You mean the CPUC, not DWR?
I'm sorry, well, the water, the water division within the CPUC, that's who's meeting with you, right? They're the same people that came here and did the hearing about Vaughns. And when Edison admitted that they had given away water allocations to the island company, that they didn't even have a basis for doing it, they acted like, oh, okay, oh gee. And nothing happened, and nothing followed up, and it was very clear that they're in the pocket together. They work together all the time. So I just would encourage you to think of a different strategy. Call on Janice Hahn, call on Lowenthal, call on Patrick O'Donnell, because I just don't think we have any clout with them, and that you're gonna get anywhere.
All of those options are being explored right now, so I assure you of that.
I mean, I hear your frustration.
Oh, yes, and I'm not even voicing it, but
Right, and the community's feeling it too, and along those lines. So, I know we've now been granted a stage three, but with lesser restrictions, and there's something else that maybe Santa Claus is gonna give us next month. But in the meantime, they've done things that make absolutely no sense. They finally put in a ceiling, so that if you had been a water hog, so that when the rationing went into effect, you still had a bunch of water, they finally put in a ceiling to say, no, you know, compared to other people in your situation, with your size house or whatever, we're gonna create a ceiling. Well, now they've lifted that ceiling, but people like me, who saw no difference between stage three and stage two, because I was already so low, are not being popped up anything. This makes no difference to me, six months out of the year, going from stage three to stage two. And I bet you, there are a lot of people in the community who are in that position. And yet, they've decided unilaterally, that people who were already water hogs are now gonna have the ceiling taking off. That doesn't seem fair to me, and it doesn't seem fair to a lot of people in the community. I also really would like to know, when, you know, when we went into the rationing, they set up this lost revenue account, where they get to keep track of all the money that they're losing? Why isn't that information that's available to us? I think people really need to be able to plan for what's coming down the pike. So, that's all I'm gonna talk about with Edison, because it's just so irritating. So, at the last city council meeting, I was taken aback by the use of the public nuisance situation for a tree that is in somebody's backyard, that is only gonna affect two neighbors. I had a policy that the city didn't have resources to settle disputes that were essentially between neighbors, because they have their own action, they can go to small claims court, a judge will listen to them and make decisions about these things. But what I think people don't understand is, it's another revenue source for the city attorney's office, and they do this in all their cities, they say, we're gonna start these nuisance abatement actions, it'll be great, we'll get your code enforcement guys to get power. But what people at home don't understand is, that guy who was on the phone, who had already trimmed his trees, maybe it took him a while to do it, but he had trimmed his tree, and then you came back and said to him, no, you have to take these trees down now. You spent $2,000, but that's not enough. By the way, the attorney's fees for the prosecutor, and the guy that was on the phone, and the arborist that we hired, is gonna be put on your tax bill when we find that you've created a public nuisance. Is that really how you want to treat people, homeowners in your town? We can't find a better way of getting people to deal with things, or maybe saying to them, this looks like a neighbor dispute, and you need to go handle it yourself? We always have people coming into the city saying, my neighbor built across my property line. There's small claims court, you can go do that yourself, and it's not gonna cost you anything, and people will listen to you there. I just don't think it's a very good use of our resources, and it's not the way to achieve that end. I had a question, too, about finances. Where is the audit for 2015, 2016, in response to a Facebook post that I had done about why isn't their financial information up to date on the website? Councilman McGugan, and I appreciated, got back and said, you know, we're asking these questions, too, but, and we're about to head into budget time. Well, how do you do a budget if you don't have a completed audit for the year before? On the website, there's a graph of revenues, it stops in October. So, how are we doing? We've had rain, there's snow, which means lots of people are skiing instead of coming here. I think we'd like to get a feel for what's the revenue looking like compared to last year, since you guys added about a million and a half in revenues that you were counting on. Well, if it's not coming through, wouldn't it be good to know sooner than later? And then just on the warrants, there's a $52,000 warrant that doesn't have a payee listed, it's for December 2016, it would be nice to know what that is. There's also $179,000 paid to the low and moderate income housing fund, was that a budgeted item, or is this something that came back from state finance, saying that our ROPS was not gonna be approved?
I don't know that.
Okay, I'll just, I'm assuming somebody will follow up with that. And then lastly, on the hospital report from the Jason Parrots, there were two items relating to the internet and efforts to get AT&amp;T to help. I can tell you that people in the community have the same feeling about internet, and what I don't understand is that the PUC approved AT&amp;T's merger, and part of that approval was that they would provide internet services, that they were bound to do things to improve internet services for people, especially in rural communities. And yet, I know if you call AT&amp;T today and say, I'd like to get your internet, you'll be told, sorry, we have the maximum that we will allow. So, again, I know you're a stretch for resources, but it's something I think that would definitely benefit the community and benefit the hospital. So if they're gonna be trying to do something, and maybe we have a connection at CPUC that can help them with that. And the other thing is that the state lands commission has a person, a geekified person, whose deal is ancient maps involving the tidelands.
Yes.
So you want to track that person.
Reed Bogiano, his name is, I think, Ms. Albers, if I could mention, Mayor, that I believe that the audit is coming in, to your March, Robert? If I, just to answer Ms. Albers' questions, because it's an important question.
The auditors are coming next week for their field audit, and we plan on presenting the completed audited financial statement at the end of next month.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Patience.
Hello, Dale Kendall, 320 Catalina Avenue. In 2012, when I bought my first property here, I've always been an environmentalist, and I was concerned about hearing about sea level rise, but I didn't really think about it. I knew that the property I was buying was above beacon, which is 16 feet above sea level, and I thought, well, I'm okay. And then recently, about five months ago, when we had a storm here, I was over town, and someone sent me a video of the water hitting the seawall pretty high, and actually coming up above it, and I started thinking about it, and investigating a little bit online. After a couple of weeks of looking at videos and reading every single thing that I could find, I called some marine scientists, just to see, is this gonna affect us, or what's, what could happen? And the consensus is that in 33 years, by 2050, the oceans are gonna rise approximately two feet, and by 2100, they could rise six feet. If we don't, if some miracle doesn't happen, this is already on its way to happening. There's a possibility that it could be changed, but it's unlikely. So, there's been, so after my initial shock of realizing what's gonna happen to Front Street, what's gonna happen to the town here, I spoke to a few scientists, there's been some studies actually done on Southern California and the Channel Islands, including Avalon. The study's been completed, it's gone under peer review to make sure that it's as accurate as it can be, and all of this information changes as the years go by. Right now, there's an ice shelf, Larson Sea, that's getting ready to fall into the ocean, which I don't know if any of you have been watching. It's not gonna raise the sea level, it's approximately the size of Delaware, but it's gonna maybe allow more glaciers to come into the water. I spoke to the scientists, they said that they are willing to come over here and talk to us, they have outreach. And so I said to them, well, what's gonna happen to Avalon? I mean, we're, like, on a high tide, it looks like it's like this high to me. And they said, you know, it's gonna be each city's problem, you know, to deal with it, and it's a huge issue. So, I've decided to form a little bit of a group for anybody, whether you believe in climate change, whether you don't, just to talk about it and see where we stand. Because if this really happens, you know, we could potentially, in our lifetime, see a two-feet rise in a high tide could be catastrophic on Front Street. And I can just imagine it on the news, you know, and tourists might be afraid to even come here. Like, when we had the fires, I wasn't here, but I heard that, you know, tourism went down because people didn't come, I don't know, I wasn't here. But I think that this is something that we really need to address sooner than later, and I don't want to see it like with the water problem. From what I see, there's, water's been an issue for like 30 years, and we're still dealing with Edison, and they're trying to get money to pay for, you know, one tank that now we need three tanks, or who knows? And that's an issue, like, we can deal with water, but if the sea level rises on Front Street, and it really is happening, if it really is happening, we need to get on doing something sooner than later. So, I'm gonna be forming a group, and at the next meeting, I'll announce when our first meeting will be, and hoping you guys can all come, for, just for the community to discuss what's happening, and what we can do, and sort of nudge you guys along to try and do something.
Would you like to give your phone number out today, so if anybody's listening, they can get in touch?
Yeah. My phone, my cell number, anybody can call anytime, it's 323-633-1046. That's 323-633-1046. And it really is like, you know, what are we going to do? What are we gonna do? Because if it really rises six feet, I mean, even if you could build a seawall, who's gonna want to sit in the restaurants on Front Street and look at a six-foot wall? I mean.
Well, I don't mean to laugh, the visual is not good.
And I mean, that could be potentially 100 years from now, but, you know, in 33 years, which, you know, could be two feet, we could have a huge problem. So, and, but, just one side note, I'm in the, as you guys probably don't know, I'm in the dollhouse miniature business, and over the weekend, one of the, one of my customers' husband is a scientist at Santa Barbara, not an environmental scientist, but I asked her what she thought about it, and she said that there is a small potential that we will be able to reverse it, that somebody will come up with something to reverse this climate change. And she was hopeful. So, you know, who knows really what's gonna happen, but the more we can discuss it, the more we educate ourselves, the better off we're all gonna be. So on the next meeting, I will the next meeting, I will...
Announce the date.
Announce the dates and all that, but we need everybody to get involved.
Okay. And this is Dale Kendall speaking.
Dale Kendall, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, may I just mention, first of all, that I've enjoyed this kind of conversation with Mr. Kendall. And the group that he's talking about will be informative to the process that you've already started. That's A, is to update the local coastal plan. There's a climate change aspect, element to that. Also, the state lands commission has asked us for a, an analysis of, of climate change on lands that we hold in trust for the state. So these will dovetail together and the group that Mr. Kendall's talking about would be very informative to that, to that process that is, that is underway.
Truly.
Thank you.
Yolanda Montano. I'm calling, I'm up here today because I want to talk about, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you just need to speak up.
I want to talk about our internet, our lack of internet. I just want to reach out to you guys to let you know that the chamber has put together a separate subcommittee or a separate group. You play to pay for, to bring corporations and bigger events to the island. So we have a bunch of hospitals, a bunch of hotels and tour companies and business owners that have participated last year. And we've put, personally put quite a bit of marketing dollars towards this extra marketing that we're putting out for corporate. And one of our big complaints is, from our corporate feedback, is a lack of internet service. And we're all banning together to bring more business to the island and we're focusing on corporate. Well, corporate are always attached to their phone. That when they show up, that's what they do. It's business. We have to get them connected to the internet. And we had Univision here a few weeks ago and I was very embarrassed because they had to, they were running out and shooting, they're filming and then running back to the lobby and trying to hook up and couldn't hook up to download the pictures. It was just a mess because the internet was so bad. And I think that the city needs to reach out to Catalina Broadband and see if there's something we can do to get more bandwidth. Because the more corporate event people we bring over, the more revenue for the town, revenue for the city. And I market that we have free wifi at the hotel and all my print, which I'm ready to forget that because it's hit or miss. And then we get complaints and bad reviews. So I think it's, that is something that's really important to our community is a lot of people get business interrupted, lose money and so forth because we don't have the bandwidth that. And I think that the city really needs to try and help out our community that way, especially if we're putting extra money to try and bring these corporate people over here and we can't service them.
Could I just comment on that Councilmember Cassidy had raised this issue to me more recently. And I know that the exec, the chamber CEO, we've had a conversation. We do have an IT specialist who we have under contract, that's Patrick Grady. And I've offered it, went at a meeting to, because he is, he is the technical, from our standpoint, technical. Of course, the city does franchise the, the cable provider. And as, as I recall, the original franchise, which, which we put out when I was here last, there are, there are going to be standards of performance. But that conversation, as you say, is very important. And I know Jim and Mr. Talujan is, and that, that will take place when, the next meeting and we'll be happy to see what we, what part we can play.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more thing. Council, Councilman Joe Sampson was talking about all the dirt that was at the stables. Well, I boarded horses there my whole life. And you know where the dirt goes to the street now? To that, you know, the wall? When you, beginning of the stables where they go in? Well, there's a wall that goes all the way up to the bird park. Well, we used to ride horses on that little alley. It was just a little trail. And it was five feet high. So now the dirt is all the way up to the road. So is there any policies or regulations that the city has for dumping dirt in a flood zone where it has to be tested or any requirements that is on the books or something? Because, I mean, that's really scary. That's up, that, I mean, that was, that wall was at least five feet.
Five, six, seven, six feet, seven feet.
Yeah. And now it's, it's just leveled to the street. So that's all dirt that was dumped from all these different job sites. I mean, is anybody concerned? I mean...
I've brought it up multiple times. I'm concerned.
Well, it seemed as though it was impacted appropriately and all of that and tested. However, I don't know if the city attorney has a comment.
Well, again, the illegal dumping of dirt in the city is a public nuisance and you could initiate code enforcement actions, but we might get criticized for trying to do that.
Was it illegal dumping of dirt?
Well, that's the thing. If, if it may be illegal, but we did enact about four years ago as part of the cease and desist order, a comprehensive storm water code that prohibits dirt from going into the bay, that provides a whole bunch of procedures and penalties and can say, the city can actually issue administrative orders for remediation under a state and federal law. So we have the ability to do that if the facts justify that there are, you know, illegal discharges into the bay. Because it's all tied to an illegal discharge into the bay.
The city released a grading permit for that, but, but it, it's not sensible to have that dirt. That dirt is actually above the road. It goes up to the road and it goes above it. That was my problem. My problem was them dumping that upstream in a FEMA flood, FEMA recognized flood zone to begin with. But there's other citizens that are concerned about it. The fire station's right there. The city hall's right here. If that dirt releases into that flood canal and it goes beyond it in a big rain, which we've seen a few, and the dirt's already starting to release. It's going down into the ditch into our harbor. I sent pictures to David.
I think that's a priority and that should be a huge concern to the city. I mean, that's the flood plain and who knows what's in that dirt? And I don't, I mean, anybody can take a piece of property and just use it as a landfill?
Well, and actually, I think to dovetail on what the city attorney had said and he brought up is that any fill, any fill first should be tested. And I'm, it probably, I'm not saying it wasn't here, but any fill, it's not the, the community dump site for dirt. Because dirt, you have to do an analysis before you deposit it. It has to determine that that is okay. It's a type of soil that's uncontaminated in any way. And I have no reason to think or to know that there's any contamination. I'm just saying that that...
Denise, would you know if there's anything on file that states that that was tested and it's clean?
We've tested it since we've been on the council. It was tested. Because it was a big concern of his, but when we did the compaction and stuff, I believe we tested it at the time.
And, and it's going into the harbor, which is what I said it was going to do. It's going to all, it's a soft pack. I mean, even though it's 95% compaction, I'm sorry, it's running off and it's going into the harbor. You walk in there and you, and you sink six inches into the soil when it's raining. Believe me, it's going to come into the harbor. It's already has. We've had a few dump truck loads of dirt, obviously, that's run off, gone down into the ditch and run down into the harbor. I mean, that was the problem I had to begin with. But I'm afraid that we're going to get a big release of it and it's going to go into the whole downtown area.
And that was your point about K rail or something in there to prevent that?
Yeah, K rail's in front of that ditch up there. I mean, at least so it'll stop a big mud flow. But right now, we're getting small mud flows. And like I said before, it's, it's impossible to determine how much dirt is actually going in there. But you can see there's trenches in, in that area and, and that dirt's running downstream. Like, I don't know how many times I got to say it. There's, there's dirt in our harbor now from that, from that dump site up there. And that was my big problem to begin with. We're in a cease and desist order. We can't have more material in the harbor. For one, it's, it's...
Thank you.
We've got to meet our, our cease and desist order. I mean, Jesus.
Kathleen Carlisle, 311 East Whitley. This is going to be really quick, I promise everybody. But this is going to be really important to one person and then to their family and friends and then to our entire community. And that's the one first person that dies on Pebble Beach Road when the hillside comes down. We've had this problem for a long time. I can't believe there isn't some sort of funding out there. I know we have this little K rail with the fence on top and you're talking about a wall, but there are systems in place all over California and Malibu where there are entire hillsides of chain link netting. Somebody is going to die on that road and then you're going to have, finally, a room full of people here demanding that you get some money and fix it now. So just, I encourage you to figure it out and fix it.
Right. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Joe, I apologize on the issue with the property out there at the casino area in question. I did have a talk today with the island, or the title company. And here's where the issue sits right now, but let me give you just a little bit of history. A year ago, when there was kind of a blowhole developed out at the casino property, Joe and I went out there and we looked and, you know, this is all fill. You know, it's basically sitting on top of what was state lands held by Avalon in the trust. And the question came up, you know, and it's kind of developed to this point, that you take little sugar loaf and big sugar loaf. That entire area around there, outside of, you know, the original natural geology, has got massive fill and breakwater put up by the island company, you know, starting, actually banning started some of it in 1917. After that, in 1920, oh, 27, 28, when they built the casino. Well, the casino is right on top of state lands. And we, you had actually sent a letter, I think, to Randy Harrell asking him for either a quit claim deed from the city or the state, giving that property to the island company. We never got a response from him. From there, we've talked to this title company and, and I've had them go back as far as they can. And the only trustee that they find is, which is suspicious, from Helen Wrigley to the island company in 65. Prior to that, there's nothing on record. Now, that was a remarkable event when that natural geology was converted to a massive land holding, which is now a peninsula. It's remarkable that the city has absolutely nothing on file that shows any money pass to the state, the city, or any jurisdiction. It seems to have just been done. And the title company said that, that there, there could be something that the island company has that is not on file with the county or the state. And it would be up to them to produce that. And other than that, they're at a roadblock. So that was some new information I had today that I didn't get to give to you. But so basically, they said the city council would have to go to the island company and basically demand that, for example, as we pay that rent out there, that they actually own the property. Because you can go to the museum right now and look at the pictures of natural geology as it existed and this gradual buildup of the peninsula. And the fact that there's no reference to how that was converted to the island company, it's remarkable. So when you look at the casino, 75% of it sits on state lands, a casino building itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the immaculate conception.
Okay. Oh, we got, we got Mola. Hey, Tony.
Hello. Tony Bedravich, 56 Plaza Azul, or also representing as CEO of the Conservancy. So a couple of topics, I know the city manager mentioned before the meeting you weren't going to talk about tonight, but just because they were on agenda, I just wanted to, one, speak of the fact that my, my opinion as a CEO of the Conservancy, we have a very collaborative relationship going. And Mr. Sampson, I appreciate your comments about the Conservancy and the work we do. And I know many of you are involved with the Conservancy and helpful and have come to some of our events and things like that. Related to the Avalon Santa Catalina Restoration and Preservation Act, the wording of it was a concerning moment for me, just to sort of see what it said. And I think that, I think David does fine work. I know we'll get to a point of understanding it. But before the council moves too quickly on a subject like that, I would hope there's some public debate and some understanding of sort of what's going on and how that affects the entire island. Because as you know, the Conservancy has a major portion of this island in their name. And so when you're talking about preservation of an island, along with the city of Avalon, it's just, we want to make sure we're working in collaborative fashion and that we're doing things that are good for everyone involved. So that was the only thing on that. I also don't quite know where the funding comes on that right now. The, as I read it, I don't know that that funding actually exists as mentioned, but good to investigate and a very smart thing to look into. The second item, also apparently not on agenda for tonight, was to discuss the idea of lobbyist. I had a sidebar conversation with the city manager and just wanted to let the council know that I think it's a very smart idea to look for revenue opportunities. I think that is sound practice. It is a reasonable approach. But again, my concern was the way you approached this, because if it's an affiliated firm to the city attorney, you want to make sure that you get some outside counsel because you're using public dollars to invest in, in a group like this. So you, the deliverables are something you should be very careful about. I come from a nonprofit world. I look at this stuff all the time. I understand lobbyists. Federal lobbyists are the toughest because the movement is slow. But I think it's smart to look at this and that type of thing. And they may be the ideal firm for the city to look at. I just think you have a more difficult situation because of that affiliation. The third topic I just wanted to bring up because I, I've been quiet on the subject and, you know, I watch the city council meetings. I come occasionally because I see something on the agenda that's interesting. But both, I noticed that the, the two newspapers of town, both on the 16th and 17th, mentioned a little bit about the water. And I wanted to not necessarily have an opinion, but just remind you that water's a very collaborative subject on the island. And the Conservancy has a reservoir in our backyard that we work hard for. And we spend thousands of dollars a year, probably closing to, close to six figures a year, keeping roads and access to the water pipes. And so Edison can get around the island and Edison can take care of the power and all that. And we, on the interior of the island, I represent a lot of people. So I think the numbers are, you know, we have about 78,000 people who tour from the city of Avalon into the wild lands of California or the Conservancy land. That's a pretty big number. We run a very small portion of that ourselves. Most of that is by outside tour groups. The other thing is, we host almost 240,000 overnight campers on the camps that the Conservancy has. And those people do a lot of business in Avalon. Not everyone comes to Avalon, but there's a lot of revenue that supports that. The other thing is all of those camps and the Conservancy property that's inland pays the same rates that the people of Avalon do. And when the restrictions came out and we got a different percentage than Avalon and things like that, that, you know, a bit got under my skin because I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, we're, we're helping in every level of getting water to this community and we pay the same rates that every other citizen of Avalon does related to the RO and, or salination, things like that. So I just wanted to sort of say, you know, from a holistic view, we do a lot to support the community. We believe it's our role. We believe that's the partnership that the Conservancy has. So we keep roads open, as Mr. Sampson was mentioning. We are out there, we're keeping an airport open to support the city, doing a lot of things that are not revenue or cash neutral for us. And I'm not saying anything's changing there, but I'm saying just please look at water as something that every person on this island, whether they live in Avalon or work through Avalon, most of my staff of the Conservancy is an Avalon resident. I'm an Avalon resident. I would love to see water improved on the island. I think it's an important topic. But these three topics were all things that I just thought it was worth saying hello and checking in and letting you know that, you know, we have a soft opinion in a helpful way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate that.
That's it?
I'm going to consent.
What? Okay, now we're going to the consent calendar. Yes.
Items number one, seven and eight, I request to remove from the agenda. If I may, I'll proceed. Item two is expenditure submitted for approval. Recommended action is to approve a total expenditure of $2,972,103.2. Item number three is a waterside permit modification application. Item number three is a waterside permit modification application aficionados. The recommended action is to make affirmative findings that the conditions set forth in the Avalon municipal code have been met, that are contained in the staff report, and grant the waterside project application modification of adding 14-foot skiff to the aficionados' charter's waterside permit. Item number four is to authorize the execution of a professional service agreement with DUDEC for audit of the city's sewer system management plan. That's the SSMP. And to authorize the city manager to execute same in an amount of $10,080. Item number five is authorization to purchase a pressure washer. The request is to authorize the purchase of a HydroTech 8 GMP pressure washer from Steam Cleaners, Inc. for Public Works at a cost not to exceed $25,000. This will literally save many hours and, and do a much better job on cleaning our, our streets. Item number six is the shoreboat service. The city did issue an RFP requesting proposals to provide shoreboat services. There were three responses to the RFP, two of which adhered to the requirements of the RFP. Catalina Coastal Tours and Fishing and the current operator, Island Enterprises, both responded to requesting a subsidy to run shoreboat service. The recommended action is to waive any irregularities in the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Catalina Coastal Tours and Fishing for Shoreboat Services as specified in the RFP released on December 13 and in form approved by the city attorney. The second is to authorize the city manager to compensate Catalina Coastal Tours and Fishing with a subsidy in the amount of $239,000 each year from budgeted harbor funds to operate a year-round shoreboat service covering the initial contract period of March 1, 2017 to February 28, 2022. Item number nine is introduction.
That's general business.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was on a roll. I apologize. I apologize.
Okay. Well, I'd also like to put poll item number six. I mean, not poll, um, poll.
Yeah. Yeah, pull it.
To discuss it, not to.
Six.
To take it off the agenda.
If nothing else, then I would make a motion to approve items two, three, four, and five.
A second. Second, that motion.
Thank you. Moving to second comments. Call for the vote. I just want to say I'm real, well, I'm sorry, Denise, I got really excited about the pressure washer. It's, I got a letter from a gentleman about the gum because the gum is nasty. And I, someday I might come forward and say, let's ban gum on Catalina because I really am tired of the gum. But I also see, thank you, John. Jesse out there on the mall, I've been seeing him with a scrub brush and some kind of solvent and he's, he's really working on those benches and working on the ground. I really want to kind of shout out to him for doing such a great job, but hopefully this is going to make everybody's job easier and the community happier. So I make that.
Thank you very much on behalf of the crew that does that work. Thank you, Mayor and Council for that.
They're incredible, yeah. Okay, item number six.
Harbor Master, please. Wait, presentation.
Good evening. You know, we've been working for the last year and a half to get the shoreboat issue resolved. And in the last RFP, we finally got three responses, two of which were responsive and stuck to the requirements of the RFP itself. Out of the two responsive bids that came in for the RFP, Catalina Coastal Tours was requesting a $239,000 subsidy and Island Enterprises was asking for $807,732.1. We went through and looked at each item of the RFP and in the staff report is highlighted the answers that Catalina Coastal Tours gave to each requirement. And if there's any questions?
I'm looking at the, at this, it says Wing Cat 24 U.S. multipurpose vessel. Is that the vessel that, um, let's see, Catalina Coastal Tours was going to use for shoreboat?
That's correct.
How many, how many of those did they want to put in?
He's going to put in two.
Two of those boats there?
Two of those boats. And they can substitute, they've got three different six-pack boats that they can add into the ones that carry up to 21 passengers.
Are these like, can, can, you know, I'm wondering if, if somebody with his handicap is able to utilize these, access to these boats? I mean, and it doesn't, it looks like it's pretty low, too. Some of the boats are pretty high. I, I don't know, how, what do you think of this vessel here? This, this one that's in the photograph?
It's going to be a Coast Guard certified passenger carrying vessel and if it'll get the job done.
Does it have a top on it? I mean, you guys going to get a bimini for it?
I read in there that it has a soft top.
Yeah, something because it's got a, I don't know, it's just good to have something that people can get out of the elements, at least for a short, a short period of time so their, their goods and things can be kept under something. What's going to power these boats? Is it inboard, outboard?
It's an outboard motor.
Outboard motor, okay.
Yes, and Scott? I don't remember. Scott's last name is it.
Hi, Captain Scott Gorozenko, Coastal Tours.
Do you have questions directly?
I can answer about the top. It's a soft top for the vessel. It covers the full length of the vessel.
Okay. Have you checked, you've driven these boats?
Actually, I have not. This is a custom boat, but it is a U.S. certified Coast Guard vessel. And I actually have the manufacturer here with me.
Really?
Who makes these.
Is there one on the island?
There is not currently one on the island.
Yeah, it's, I'd like to see it. I'd like to try to get on it and get off it and see what it looks like and see how other people have. Is this something that can be used for, for a shoreboat? Is that what it's made for?
Absolutely.
Yes.
There's several places across the, the country as well as in, outside the United States that utilize this type of vessel for taxi-type service.
In ocean-type conditions or in lake conditions?
Both.
In both? And are they ADA accessible?
There was no specification to an ADA accessible vessel, so these have not met that standard, if there is a standard for that, for a shoreboat. But I don't believe there has been a current standard for that, at least with the vessels that have been in operation over the last, you know, several years.
What is required under, under the ADA is if someone is on a, is on a boat and wants to get onshore, that the city provides some kind of accommodation to get that person on the shore. And I've talked, had an extensive discussion with Brian Bray. We do have vehicles that, that can help with that. They, they, sometimes they, they dock at the pier. Sometimes people are, as a last resort, are carried. But there's one gentleman that comes every year with a scooter that we've been able to accommodate for, for years. But Brian can answer specifics about that.
Yeah, we need to accommodate that somehow. So Brian, is that, is it doable? Is Brian still here? Oh, there you, um, can, can you, so you guys will assist when we have, I mean, that's going to be hard to do when we got a full harbor and somebody.
It's no different than what's gone on for the last 50 years.
Okay.
The boat comes in, I mean, if they have to come into the dock and drop the person off, there's no dock in any harbor that's ADA. I mean, once the person gets off the dock, if it's a low tide, it's going to be a steep ramp.
But we can accommodate, I mean, it is, it is different. It's changing. Things are changing. This, this ADA, this act is, has made us a little more, have to be a little more compliant with people who, who are a handicap. And I want to make sure that we are able to deal with any situation and it's all, I mean, it's.
To the best of our ability and after speaking with the city attorney and they checked on it.
Okay, as long as, as long as you assist these guys, if somebody, you know, has a problem with, with getting on and off the boat, we got to have somebody there to make sure that they get off safely. Because I, I've never seen one of these boats before. I don't even know how I would get on and off it. That's what I'm saying. It would have been nice to see one and, and see how.
I would assume if it's Coast Guard approved, the getting on and off is part of what they would be looking at. I mean, I mean, don't you think? Oh, sure.
I'm Dave Carlisle, 311 East Whitley. I represent APS Marine, which is the builder of the Wing Cat boat. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. If Scott's proposal is approved tonight, I will be happy to come and do a full PowerPoint presentation on the vessels. When he first came to us, it was very evident that we needed a very cost-effective vessel, safety being number one priority with any vessel that's going to be transporting passengers. But also, we need the cost to build and the cost to maintenance down because the current cost to operate shoreboats is clearly too high. So we did look at an assessment with the ADA accessible vessels and it adds approximately $175,000 per vessel to, to accommodate someone in a full wheelchair access. To answer, Mr. Sampson, answer your questions about just basic access. These will have a full cover. So right now, the shoreboats have a cover that basically starts just after the boarding area. You know, when you step down, the cover starts after that. These will actually have a full cover that extends all the way over the captain, so the captain won't be getting wet as well. But there'll be a cutout over the boarding area and that whole cutout will also have railing. So not only can you reach down and grab those railings, but you can reach all the way around and grab the railings as you board the vessel. Your questions about the height, they do look small on there, I agree. We went and took a bunch of measurements to make sure they were going to work with the boat. So folks weren't taking an abnormally large step down to the shoreboat or abnormally large step up from the shoreboat. And the average step is about nine inches. So I think if you measure around town, a step like this right here, you'll find it's about a foot. So the nine inches is, is very doable. So we did, I, because I'm a local resident and because these are going to be representing me, you can bet I'm going to take a lot of pride and make sure these vessels work for the job they're intended for. These are going to be between 19 and 21 passenger vessels, depending on the final stability test, but the calculation comes out at 19, I'm sorry, 21, plus a captain. But that's usually plus or minus one, you know, when you actually do the final stability real-life test where you move the weights around the vessel. And they will be full Coast Guard approved, no different than the existing shoreboats and no different than the Catalina Express boats. They get the same calculations done, the same rigorous testing done to verify that they are safe for the public.
So they're good going out to, let's say, if there's a good wind chop going on, they can go out to Hamilton Cove and.
Yeah, these will be rated.
Just cancel beach and.
Yes, these will be rated for up to 20 miles from safe harbor. So they will be rated for everywhere that the shoreboats do operate, yes.
Thank you. That's very insightful.
You want any questions? Anyone?
I'm, I'm kind of impressed with the ticketing. Some kind of an automated ticketing system, I think.
I'll leave that to Scott.
It's wonderful. No, I was reading that, but that's, I think that's great.
These, these vessels will also help employ locals, not only the captains, but will be buying the engines from Jim in the local outboard shop.
Great.
So employ Jim in the maintenance and purchase of the engines. And the vessel repair will be conducted out at the local boatyard as well. These are lightweight vessels that can be lifted right from the crane at the mall or pulled out at the ramp with the trailer that's made for them.
David, how did you come up with your net profit figure?
I'm sorry, that's not me at all.
Oh.
I'm no longer Catalina Coastal Tours.
I have some, I have some finance questions partly for Bob Messer and then partly for you. So you're asking for a subsidy of $239,000 with an overall net profit of $28,692. So how did you come up with the subsidy amount?
Well, the first thing was I knew the ceiling on the subsidy. I wanted to be competitive on it and also factored in what I felt to be a fair profit margin based upon the fact that we already have an existing business which nets a really nice profit. So we, we're looking at some processes by having both businesses combined into one that are going to help our profit margin across the board. But we also want to give back to the community. That's the main thing as well. We look at this as being a business that we can consistently provide service year-round, which our current base of business keeps us very busy during the summer. But, you know, I like to keep my employees, you know, working year-round. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a consistent business for them as well, so.
And in your column of taxes, the $28,000, what, what taxes encompass this number?
Those taxes would primarily be income-type, type taxes. The employee taxes are rolled up into the overall employee numbers for payroll.
And then for our finance director, if I can help you just, or if I can have you help me understand, so if the city gives a subsidy regardless, the city gives a subsidy, but then we're still charging the operator the 7% harbor use fee, is that just to keep our numbers straight and to keep everything in their rightful columns for our budgeting purposes and income? Because it seems like we're giving money, but then we'll be getting it back. Or is that the?
That would be correct, yes. We, we would receive the revenue, but we would be providing a subsidy, be just to treat them the same as, as all the other businesses in the harbor.
Okay, so let me ask a question to the council and David. So there's two, there's two bidders here. There's Island Enterprises as well. Is that like, they want a bigger subsidy? So is that why we're talking about Catalina Coastal Tours here? Do we, do we need to mention Island Enterprises at all? Is it just too much money there?
The city manager did and their subsidy was $807,000.
So it's, so we have to go with the lowest bidder? Is that what this is? Or we have to make the decision?
Well, we can make the decision if we want to give an $800,000 subsidy to the other applicant. We, I guess we could.
Yeah, this is not a public works project where you have to give it to the lowest. It is, it, you, no, 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 you do not have to. But you can look at the various factors and this is, will they provide reliable services? Is it the type of service we want? And do we want to pay this, you know, certain amount of money for the subsidy? This was, in our budget, it's $250,000. So anything above that would have to come from some other funds. Oh, I come out of the harbor fund, but it would detract from other purposes.
So I'm just curious, for the Harbor Master, if, what else was different from the proposal that Island Enterprises gave? Were there any other differences besides the amount of subsidy requested?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know that, you know, there was a lot of infrastructure and there was a lot of depreciation involved in their subsidy.
No, I think, I think the council member is asking substantively speaking, were they offering the same hours, same kind of service?
Did they meet all the other criteria of the RFP?
Yes.
To your satisfaction?
Yes. And they had the option to offer a alternate schedule and the Catalina Coastal Tours came up with the same schedule that the city had put in the RFP.
Well.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, yeah, I just.
We have, Mr. Stickler?
Hi, I'm Jeff Stickler. I represent Island Enterprise, which has been your carrier for the last 40 years. for the last 40-some years. Over that 40 years, we've demonstrated that we could operate and build a business, and we have, increasing the volume of people that come to the island by the cruise ship business. Our goals were to try to be self-sufficient and be able to bring business that would keep the shoreboat business, you know, solvent. Up until recently, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, the contract for the cruise ships was underbid without much knowledge of this happening with us, until about a week before our contract expired. The cruise line called us and said they had an alternate proposal, which was, you know, some 40% less than what we were offering them. So, we had no recourse on that, because we were carrying the harbor and everything else in our proposal, and we elected not to pursue it any further, because we only had a week to look at it. So, the other carrier, which was, I think Catalina Classic Cruises, started operating a week after we got notice, without going through any kind of process or anything with the city, or coming before the city with any kind of waterside permit, or a chance for us to explain to the council what this might do to your service over time. Prior to that meeting, we had met with Mayor Kennedy and explained that, you know, there was a chance that this could happen, because it had happened, you know, happened in the past with the island company, and that we needed to discuss it and try to figure out how to avoid what we're setting in right now, and that's with a shoreboat service that can't sustain itself. So, for two years, and I explained this to the city and over 11 meetings or something, maybe even more, over the last few years, that we had a deficit, and that we were looking at about a $500,000 deficit at the time. So, in the first RFP that came out, I think we were the only bidders. And we pointed out that we had $500,000 worth of deficit, and that would just keep us in the game. Now, you gotta understand, between the operation that they're proposing, and I think he even admitted himself, that it's a little different than what we have been running for you all these years. It's not as robust, I would, I would try to use that word, as far as the operation that you've had in the past. So, with that happening, and without, you know, due process at the city level, and no chance to come before you, we lost that contract overnight, literally. And subsequently, we met with the mayor, which was Bob Kennedy, and then he lost to the new council, and we proceeded on with the mayor and the city manager at the time, Ben Harvey, trying to, you know, go back, I'm sorry, not the mayor, but actually, one of the councilmen, to go back and forth to see what we could do by raising some money from both Kenaby's office, which we went to directly. In fact, we got the dialogue between the city council, and the councilman and Ole Olson, along with the city manager at the time, to try to get funds. And these funds were on the edge of somewhere around $300,000 to $400,000, that Kenaby said he thought would be something that was attainable. We had several meetings, we had several meetings with Don Kenaby's office, and Ben Harvey was working on it after we got him on board. And right before we put the deal together, literally, it was a Thursday, and we had a meeting, and by Tuesday, Ben Harvey was fired by the city council. So, then, we were waiting for the new city manager, and ultimately, you know, we're here another year later. So, during those two years, we first borrowed $500,000 to get through the first year, second year, somewhere around $350,000 to $400,000, because we quit in the middle of the year subsidizing the shoreboats. So, we're here tonight. I, I'm not saying that this operation is, you know, either what you need or what you don't need. I'm just telling you, the reason our numbers are so different are because we take into effect, or take into consideration, the fact that you have somebody that's run them all these years. I mean, there's no mention of liability, cost of legal fees. I mean, we're in a litigation right now for a slip and fall. It's going to cost the company probably $10,000, including whatever they have to settle for with the insurance company, which we get now, probably two or three a year. Not because our operation is a bad operation, but because this is the climate now, there are nuisance lawsuits. We also have the ADA, which I think everybody's aware of in town, that's been going around and hitting every business in town, in regards to the ADA compliant, complacency, along with the Water Act of 1978, which is, you know, the runoff, I mean, you're all aware of all that, which we're having the same problems in the shipyards, which has raised our costs over there in the last two years about 300%, because of these attorneys that are suing shipyards and boat owners and everything else for, you know, things that are going on. So, keeping all that in mind, that's why our price is high. We also, during the RFP, there was a question-and-answer period on your forum online, and we asked if you were gonna, if we were gonna have to meet the ADA requirement, which is a huge subject right now with PVA, which is Vessel Passenger Association, and the whole industry. Now, the Coast Guard's getting ready to move on that. One of the reasons we sold five of our boats is because they were built prior to 1991, which is a cutoff for meeting these new requirements that even the cruise lines have signed on to, to meet, which are foreign flagships and were US-built. So, you can kind of imagine where that puts you. So, we raised the ante on our bid this last time, from the 500 to the 800, because we anticipated that going forward, we were going to have to meet these ADA requirements, probably within the next couple of years. And I beg to differ on harbors, and they call them harbors of safe refuge. Long Beach just spent millions of dollars, in Long Beach, creating ramps that were ADA-approved for the tide. And it is coming your way. You know what I mean? They have 60-foot ramps there that meet the tide requirement on the new Marina in Long Beach. It's coming. Whether you're a boat owner, it doesn't make sense, but you're going to have to comply with ADA. And that means all our ramps, all our docks, everything. The fuel dock, I'm assuming that when you did the fuel dock, you met ADA for the ramp that goes back and forth to, because I think it's, any, any new construction, you've got to meet these requirements, or you're going to have these ADA guys, you know, at your doorstep, which they're already here in town. They're already chasing us around for the bus. They talked to us about the shoreboats, but our shoreboats happened to be built before the law came into effect, so we kind of sat there. But it is coming, no matter what we do, we're going to be facing that. The other thing that we brought up, and I don't know if, I think the city attorney addressed it with some, in some way, but if the city provides funding for a service as, say, Bombard Service in, in Long Beach, their boats are ADA, they meet the requirement, they meet the prevailing wage order. We bid on the service that actually uses pontoon boats in Marina Del Rey, that's just going from dock to dock, and then servicing some of the boats inside the harbor. And they had a list of compliances right down to, you know, the Children's Act of, you know, whatever that you had to comply with before you could get the subsidy. So, all those things are things that we looked at when we proposed our bid. And that was with three new boats, with a custom design to meet the ADA requirement, which we didn't share with you, because we didn't think we were going to be getting very far with this particular issue. So, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. I know we cannot do it for $250,000 at the current level of what we provide for you guys over the last years. And if you're looking for a cheaper solution, these guys might be the answer for you. Now, having said all that, we still are a carrier by the state of California with a PUC permit to operate in the harbor and outside the harbor. We have that permit. I've asked the Harbor Master if we could get a waterside permit back in December, maybe even November, and he said he wasn't going to grant us a waterside permit to pay our 7%, because he wants to resolve the shoreboat issue thing. Unfortunately, without a waterside permit, we have no way to pay it. We've been paying it off a form that we have for the glass-bottom boats, but we really don't, we're not even, we don't even have a waterside permit. Our moorings that we've had for 30-some years, he's pulled, and said that he's not going to reissue those to us. So, in January, we decided that, you know, we just couldn't keep going with the service in Avalon. Now, having said that too, Brian did say that he would prorate our lease moorings until, you know, that you guys decided what you were going to do, or whenever this was going to end. It'd only been two years, so we're hoping that it would be ending soon. But we'd like to still stay in business. You may need us, you know, in the current situation, or especially outside the harbor. And we still do camps and coves. We still do beyond the city limits. When it's busy weekends, we operate outside the harbor. We're down to five boats. I really think, from our experience, I think you need to look at more than two boats for your operator, because there's downtime, there's Coast Guard, you know, time you gotta be out, especially if you work through the yard over here, there'll be delays just getting in and out of the water. So, I think that, we were always required in our franchise, actually, five boats was minimum to keep the hours that, you know, you're asking for, especially in the summertime. So, the three boats that were proposed in January, one was struck during the storm, our boat, and the other boat blew a turbo and had to come out for dry dock. And number one had bashed into the, what it is, the jet ski float, I'm sorry. I was thinking the flyboard thing, or whatever it is. So, it cracked the whole side of it, so we have those in for insurance. And I don't know if you guys realize, but insurance things take forever. You get them out, they look at it, goes back and forth, could take a month to two months, you know. Or if you have an incident where somebody gets hurt, you got a 2692 form that you gotta fill out for the Coast Guard. They have to be involved. They come down, look at the incident. That could take a while. They look at the boat, they go through the safety, equipment, the steps, whatever the incident was. If a crew member was hurt, that's a whole nother thing that stops the boat from running sometimes. So, those kind of things need to be, you know, brought to light, and, I mean, it's just something that I don't think anybody really understands about the operation unless you're in it. And it has changed. From the time we started, to now, it's much more involved, much more costly, you know, just way more things that we have to deal with, with the air quality, EPA, you know, the Water Act, all these different things that, you know, we never had to deal with in the, in the past, which has raised the cost. So, I just think that you need to really look at it carefully, because the shoreboats are a very vital part of the service that you provide in Avalon. I think they've been taken for granted for years, and I know we have people that have been with us in the company for, Dave's been with me since 1983. I've been here since before, '74. Our company was formed in '74. And, you know, we have a lot of longtime employees that have worked for us, both retired and coming over on the weekends, and people that are still here, so.
I know we definitely appreciate all of this and all of what you've done. I guess when I look at numbers like $800,000, though, I said, it's like, we believe we need to provide, have this service provided to the boaters that come to Avalon. And I don't, at what point where we say, we just can't provide that service anymore. And to me, an $800,000 subsidy means I'd be going, I don't care how they get to shore, because we can't afford $800,000. I don't think we have it. So, that's, that's my whole concern. And, because I believe that, you know, well-properly-made boats and whatever else, I mean, I, I just think we're kind of between a rock and a hard place in terms of, I mean, you can't compare the two in cost, you know?
Well, no, I know.
And I appreciate the things that you're talking about, you know, the things that can go wrong, that can create hardship, and fortunately, this young man's been, been in the boat business.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about his operation, and I, but you gotta compare it to Bombard's operation. Would you like to go back to the Gabrielle coming here for a lot cheaper, or would you like to stay with the Express boats? You know, the cost is relative, you know? So, you know, with all those things said, I just, I just would like to know if we are going to be able to continue on with the service that we've been providing with our state permit, like everybody else does in Avalon, that has to operate at least six months of the year, and also the rest of our operation, which is tied into our float and all the other things that we, we do over here, which, when we got the permit for the glass-bottom boats and the submarine, and which costs us, you know, somewhere around a million and a half, we were, we were assigned to our float, and we couldn't use any other docks. And we were also told that, you know, in the wintertime, we had to build our own docks and provide them in the harbor, like our competition, the island company. And we've done all that. But if we lose the float, we have no place to tie the sub, which is, I think, is iconic to the harbor now, the glass-bottom boat, which I think is one of the nicer boats that are running in the harbor. And we want to be able to provide those camps and coves, and people that are outside the harbor. My understanding that this was something that was only going to be within the city limits, well, you still have a lot of people that are outside the harbor that would like service, such as the jet ski float, the new wave, you know, deal, the people that anchor outside, and the fact that we already have a state permit to operate in those areas.
I don't have the answer to that, and I haven't, so anything you could add to how this will be resolved would be interesting.
I am not the technical expert, but Brian is. But I, but what I hear Mr. Stickler saying is, not putting words in your mouth, but that in addition to the shoreboat service, he has other businesses that are currently operating in the harbor. And my understanding from a conversation with the Harbor Master is that those, we have to work out an arrangement that'll allow those, those operations to continue, those addition, those other businesses to continue. And the idea is not, my understanding is not, the idea is not to completely yank everything from under you, so that you're without facilities. I, I, I would not, none of us are proposing that, and none of us would stand for that. That is not what, but tonight, what the issue is, is about the RFP and about awarding shoreboats- service. And then the subsequent issue, which is to, is to work out how we, how that is all married with the existing businesses that you would continue to operate like the glass bottom boat and the submarine, so.
I'd like to know, I'd like to ask a question now. Are you saying that when the other shoreboat service, if this other shoreboat service gets the contract, they're gonna be using the facility that you're currently in? Is that part of this?
I, I haven't heard that, no.
Okay, so that's not...
He owns, Jeff owns that end float, that he...
Okay, so that's your float and...
Well, that was, that was part of the, originally, we had to move off the city float with the shoreboat operation, build our own float. That was a Bud Smith deal to get, to get me to make more room. And I said I wanted to increase, put seats down there, lighting, you know, covering, so forth and so on for the, and we also put an office down there so they could buy tickets and, and a lot of different things. And as that developed, then we brought in the glass bottom boats and the sub, which is running off of there. And actually, when we got our permit from the council, we were told that we could only run off there in the summer and that we had to run off our other floats during the winter months.
Are you, are you able to run your, okay, so also, there's another nuance here that I, I'm not quite totally understanding, and that is, you have a couple more boats that you can still operate a service?
Yeah, we have five more boats.
I mean, but, but you're not asking for a subsidy for that, correct? You just wanna continue...
We're asking, we're asking for just the right to run like everybody else in the harbor.
Run like a shoreboat service though, I mean...
Sure.
The RFP is for exclusive, is, what they have had for decades is an exclusive franchise for shoreboats. So this RFP is for an exclusive franchise, a war exclusive franchise for shoreboat services that land in our harbor.
Okay, so what if he runs a shoreboat service outside the harbor? I mean, he can't do it?
Well, if he doesn't enter into the harbor facilities, he can do it. But he can't enter the harbor because his contract is for exclusive shoreboat services.
Okay, so all this ties into, into this, this, which we're trying to understand right now, so that we do need to air some...
The other businesses should be, this is first I'm hearing about the other businesses. There's the shoreboat, RFP, which is for shoreboat services, and then the other businesses are separate, and that's not for the council tonight. The council tonight is exclusive shoreboat franchise to take people from boats in the harbor or outside the harbor and land in, and use our harbor facilities.
I understand that, but I need to know if somebody's being displaced in, in their business and in their income and, and in all their employees and everything that's going on here. Otherwise, I'll just table this, I'll just table this whole thing until I understand it a lot more.
Well, just to, just to speak to that, exactly what the, I believe that's the city attorney, yeah, Scott. If he's saying that to use the harbor facilities from inside and outside the harbor, then the exclusive franchise that we had, that when we were tendering the cruise ships and bringing them from inside, outside the harbor and over and upon the waters, and I mean, I'm the one that created the franchise language years ago. If you take that literally, as Scott just said, then that would mean that you violated the franchise when we were operating by granting somebody else, somebody to take people in and out of the harbor, when we had an exclusive. So, I'm, I'm getting confused.
Well, their, their contract expired.
Yeah.
The reality is their contract expired. We had, we prepared an extension, a new contract agreement for them, we had it all done, and like six years ago, it was on their desk, they never signed it, it expired. And so, the exclusiveness was done. And then what happened was, we had a new cruise ship that said, we'll only bring a new cruise ship here if we have the right to have our own contractee bring the boats in. And so what we did is we allowed them to continue shoreboat services without a contract, and we entered into a new contract, or, or we allowed the cruise ship to come in and ferry its own people. Because if we didn't do that, we wouldn't have had that cruise ship.
Well, now the reality comes out. But, in our defense, what he proposed to us that we wouldn't sign was a semi-exclusive when we already had an exclusive. Is that not correct, Scott? A semi-exclusive?
Uh, it laid, at the time that was on your desk, it was exclusive, but allowed for the ability of a cruise ship. If a cruise ship came and said, we won't serve, serve the city, or we won't come to the city, it allowed the cruise ship to say, they can use your services or their own.
Okay, well...
But, but, sorry Joe, but they can, the cruise ship could use, could use IE services or their own, meaning the cruise ship services.
Or, or they could provide, they, they could contract with someone else, that's what, and that was the consideration for bringing the second cruise line into the city.
And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the franchise agreement, when it's in place means that they don't need, anybody doesn't need a separate waterside permit? Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, the municipal code actually has a, an exception for waterside permits for shoreboat operation.
So why would we be even discussing a franchise, sole use franchise agreement during this RFP if you already have another provider coming in and providing that service for the cruise ships?
Because this is exclusive for everything else.
What about the camp, the camp, so...
Sorry.
What about the camps though? I mean, sort of, this, is, is Island Coastal Tours gonna provide a shoreboat service to the camps? Is, am I understanding that, or is it just city, the city moorings? Okay, so we have no way to get people down to...
We should be getting to the mic.
Right.
Okay, we got no way to get people to the, down to the camps then? I mean, and do we need, are we even discussing this? Is this part of...
It's not part of...
It's not part of the RFP and, okay.
But then why couldn't Mr. Stickler apply for a waterside permit to do that service?
Because at the time, he was operating the contracted shoreboat service, and until the shoreboat service was settled, there was no need to get the...
So he can come in and get a waterside permit for those services?
Oh, he can, at a later point, okay.
I was, I was, I was...
Even though it's not December, even though it's not December, when we normally have new applications? Okay.
We have someone, we had a waterside permit tonight.
Okay, so do, do you understand that, Jeff, that you can do that if you want, Tom?
Well, I, I appreciate that, but we have...
I know it's not much, I know it's not what you want, but I'm saying I, I'm trying to understand everything and make sure that we don't displace, we don't totally displace you from, from, I'm concerned about that because you provided this community with a good service for a long time, with a lot of boats, you put a lot of effort into it.
Right.
You helped design a lot of, of...
We, we've already been displaced when the, when the contract for the other carrier was, I didn't, this was news to me, that...
You mean these...
Yeah.
Cruise ship, big boats that are coming in now?
Right, it's news to me because the whole franchise was predicated when it first was, if you read the franchise ordinance, it says you're not gonna create any more congestion in the harbor, et cetera, et cetera. And you've already displaced people that, you know, had permits to go over to the mole and actually were required to be at the mole because they didn't want them running off the pier. Like the parasail boat, for instance, that's, you know, restricted to the, the mole, or at the time he was. Because I listened to all those, and we've created more congestion in the harbor. I mean, it just seems like we don't stick to anything over here. We don't seem to follow our own ordinances. The other carrier ran for a year and a half before they got a waterside permit. They were just a cross-channel carrier that could bring people in and drop people at the dock and go back. They had no way of paying the 7%. Until a year and a half later, I brought it up with Ben Harvey and said, what happened to the due process there? Where we would have been able to have this conversation before you had somebody in, or they had to come in December and we had a chance to talk about it. I would assume that any other person that applies here or comes in would have to get a permit in December, as the ordinance says, and, you know, do the due process, but they just came in overnight. And like he said, the contract expired and we were notified one week prior to the contract expiring.
Okay.
So, anyhow, we, we're just where we are, we would like to continue on. I want you to keep in mind that we do have a state permit to operate in the harbor and outside the harbor. We're over five net tons, you're granting to this operator a permit for under five net tons, so there's two different classes of service, I would say.
Well, I, I do believe, depending on what happens this evening, that our harbor master and the city manager will show due diligence in trying to resolve the other issues that would lay before us.
Well, I haven't heard anything about it. In all this conversation, nobody's ever come to us about any other issues like the float, the boats that we have that we're trying to get ready for the summer, the fact that outside the harbor, you have lots of areas that aren't covered by the city waters.
Excuse me, somebody has a smart car in the parking lot with the lights on, silver. Okay, go ahead, Jeff, let's keep going.
Oh, that's what was going on.
Yeah, that's what all of a sudden...
So...
Okay, I'm sorry for the distraction.
So does, so does the, um...
Dave, you have anything more to add? Okay, well, Dave's been here for a long time too, so I just...
So does the, um, do you still keep your dock out there? And then the shoreboats are gonna tie up where the, the other shoreboats used to tie up on, on the regular two floats out in front? Is that how that works? If, if this gentleman gets to, get the contract here?
There's two floats at the end of the pier during the summertime. The city's float at the bottom of the ramps, and that's what we were offering.
Okay.
And then there's Mr. Stickler's float tied to that, but it's all a negotiation factor of where the guy's gonna go.
Okay, so if, okay, I just wanna make sure that we don't just...
I'm sorry, I had another question for Brian.
Break ties with, okay, go ahead, to break ties with what, what Mr. Stickler can provide our harbor because we need as many services as we can without getting too congested. I wanna make sure that we can go ahead with providing services for the community and for the island, for that matter, out of Avalon. It's important. Go ahead.
What's your, what's your total annual revenue for the harbor? Do you know, off the top of your head? Cause I don't.
Somewhere around $6 million. That's $7 million.
Yep, the answer to that.
Okay, so what I'm, what I've just gathered is a lot of information that Mr. Stickler gave us, which I'm sure Scott, you were listening to very carefully. ADA is gonna be coming up in the next couple of years, you're probably gonna, you have to, you probably wanna consider what's gonna be going on there because if you're carrying passengers, that's gonna, like you said, it's knocking on everybody's door, it's knocking on our door. I'm hearing that very clearly.
May I, you have on deck, if you will, a project to renovate the entire upstructure of the mole. And one of the issues that would, that will be looked at in the upstructure design is, and, and is the accessibility issues there at that facility. We all know the mole's forty some years old, 1962 or so, five or something like that. So, so the issue of accessibility at the mole itself is something that we will look at, we, and, and will need to account for, which should make service for those people who are accessibly challenged better. And, and that's, and that's part of what, what the design of that structure will be. It has, I mean, it has to be.
It's a huge issue, and it's coming.
Yeah, I understand.
It's already here in town. I mean, we already got the guy that's been suing everybody up and down the coast.
He's up and down the state, there, there's a group of them, yeah, they go to businesses.
It's already here, and PVA has taken this, the Vessel Passenger Association is coming out with a finding this year, which they're working with the coast guard for new construction of boats. So, it's, it's, we're not gonna be able to avoid it, I'm not supposed to put it that way, I don't think. I think, you know, older boats, you know, may be able to avoid it, but anything going forward, we're going to be able to, have to pay for those boats. And I think we put in the reason that we have so much depreciation and money that's in ours, is if you build three boats or four boats, which I don't think, well, first of all, I don't think two boats is enough, three boats, I'm not even sure about that. I would say more like four to five boats to do what we do. Now, if you're gonna split the, the baby, you know, and give just the moorings to another carrier, then you still have all the outside harbor, up and down the coast, and, you know...
We're not, we're not gonna be able to provide that service like we used to, that's obvious. We can't afford it anymore, I don't think, we can't afford more than, I think, what we're putting here on the table, and we're even getting scrutinized for that. Like, how can we, how can the city council possibly support a, a private business like this?
You need to find money like through MTA or some way that's, you know, more than just a budget, you know, for a year. You guys can only budget for one year, and if the money's not available next year, what are you gonna do? You may find that you have to use that money for infrastructure for ADA next year. You know what I mean? Unless you get a grant. I'm, I'm just saying, there's a lot of things you need to look at. And, you know, I know Brian has an immediate problem, and that's, you know, something that he has to deal with. So, I just, you know, I don't think you should tell us to go away. I think you could, might wanna keep us around for a little while longer.
That's exactly what I'm getting at, is like, I don't want you to go away. I don't want your company and your business and your employees to go away. I'm, I mean, we're not, and hopefully this doesn't mean you go away if you don't get the contract that is on the table, because I think it's, it's obvious that $800,000 is not something we have budgeted and we can't afford that, although your services, I'm sure are worth it. But we can't afford it anymore.
Yeah, I like the, normally the way these happen in most other cities is they will get funding for the boats, and that's what we looked at with Kenaby. They buy the boats, you buy, I'm sorry, you buy the boats, such as what Bombard has, and you actually maintain the boats, kinda like what you're doing with the, the...
Harbor patrol boats?
No, no, with the, I don't even wanna bring it up, the electric bus or whatever happened with that deal. Transit, because they have money, you know? And, and actually with Ben, we proposed to tie the transit and the bus service together as one robust service. But anyhow, Ben got fired and it never got any further than that, so...
Well, it doesn't mean David can't go ahead and try to get grants, I mean, I'm sure he's gonna work on that, because we're gonna need it whether we have your company or...
Right. You're gonna have to find some money, and, and the way it normally works is you can get the money for the boats, at least so far I've seen it. You can get the money for the boats, a one-time shot, they'll pay for the boats, and then you gotta have the money that they'll provide you to keep the operation going. And that's what they do in Long Beach, that's what they do in, in Marina Del Rey, that's what they do in Florida. I mean, there was a, there was a case in Florida where the city and the county were coming together to start a water taxi service, a bus service, and the proposer didn't have ADA-approved vessels, and they backed out because they weren't ADA-approved and they could see the problems coming down the way. And this was a few years ago. And now, we're in a much different situation. So even for us to go forward with you, and I've heard our boats are old from Brian and, you know, different things, but, you know...
I've seen your boats, they're immaculate, inside and out, bilge, stem to stern, bilge up to the...
Well, I appreciate that, but I'm... Well, I appreciate that, but I'm, I'm just saying, we, we have to do that because of the slip and falls, be able to defend, you know, you know what I mean?
Your boats look brand new.
Take pictures of all our steps, change those every year because we have to beat off the nuisance losses.
I mean, I would hate to lose your boats. I'm, I'm going to hate to lose them. I, I, I'm telling you, I, and we do want to keep you around. We want, we, we definitely want, want to keep you around. I mean...
Well, I appreciate it, but again, this is the first opportunity I've had to come and talk about this.
I appreciate you coming forward, and then if Janice Hahn would show up sometime, maybe we can start talking and getting David to start talking about grant money and see if we can provide a bigger service. Because I know Scott's other boats that he would use for backup for shoreboats, he's busy with his, his, uh, fishing charters and his charter businesses and his six-pack tours, and it's like, I don't think that that's going to provide a lot of extra services except maybe in the off-hours, um, from those boats.
Well, really, when they, when you really need them is when the boats come over for races. They have nine or 10 guys on them, sometimes 15 guys on them. They come over with a Long Beach Yacht Club sale race, they all come into the harbor, and they all want to get off the boat. The people that come during the summer, they bring their own skiff and their kid runs them back and forth, and we pick one guy up to go into the pier after they've shuttled them back and forth, you know what I mean? Since the lengthening of the dinghy requirement at 13 feet, we have the kids shuttling people back and forth, and then at the very end, the last guy gets on the shoreboat and rides it in. Or he needs to get off his boat and go to the mole to catch the express with all his bags and golf clubs and everything else.
I wish we had the money to just hire you as a consultant in the harbor.
How about, uh, during the, uh, the, uh, you know, the, you know, the art festival, we're carrying all the pictures off the boats back and forth. I mean, one guy will come and we'll have, you know, pile of pictures, or their dive gear, or it just goes on, you know what I mean? Chili Cook-Off, we carried everything but people.
Well, we do appreciate all those years of experience and knowledge.
Well, anyhow, I've said what I wanted to say. I want you to keep those things in mind as you go forward, all right?
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything, Jeff.
Sure.
Kathleen Carlyle, 311 East Whitley. As Jeff said, this is a vital service to the people in the harbor. How long have you been without shoreboat service right now? How long has the Harbor Patrol been...
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, "The shoreboat is a vital service to the harbor. I wonder how long you've been without it right now."
Harbor, restaurant. We've had shoreboat service with the Harbor Department.
No, no, I mean, a contract.
They left with mid-January.
So about a year, so this is...
No, January.
Oh, my, but haven't the harbor officers been taking people?
A lot of them.
Oh, so they limited the hours, right? Is that right? Okay. So, um, you put out an RFP. They both answered the RFP. It sounds like, um, it sounds like the Sticklers have a lot of concerns that don't really have to do with this RFP but are very legitimate, and maybe you guys can address those at a different time. But if you're looking at this RFP, um, I think you have a great proposal ahead of you. Um, I, I don't like the idea of them saying it, it looks backwards to go to this smaller boat, because we get over here and we get so used to something that we've lived with all our lives, but maybe this is better. I've ridden in these boats. They're really nice, so maybe this is actually looking forward and modernizing. I mean, they're not big costly fleet that has to be hauled out and maintained like the other boats. They're, they're, they can be pulled out easily, they have outboard motors, you know, a local mechanic is going to work on them. Um, they can be hauled into our local yard where local people can work on them. It's, it's a different type of fleet, it may be unfamiliar to you, but it's something that's viable. The cruise ships use these fleet to take people for ashore, for ashore excursions in, um, places like the South Pacific. So these are, these are boats that have been tested and used quite regularly. You guys might want to go down to San Diego and check one out or see one in person. Um, so I just wanted you to think about that, and, and I know two boats are on the proposal now, and he talked a lot about ADA requirements coming down. Dave said that they did look into those options, so maybe if this becomes viable and this works, you know, there's something they can adapt to a third boat. There is not limited here. And he talked a lot about liability issues. I'm sure Catalina Coastal Tours has that covered. Um, you guys wouldn't let them operate if they didn't have the liability to cover their things.
It's mandatory.
So I, I see Mr. Stickler's, um, he's been here a long time. I love his submarines, I love the stuff. I just think that those are separate issues from this RFP and be dealt with at a different time.
Okay, appreciate your comments. Let us bring this back to the council real quick and let's decide, and then if we need more comment because of whatever, but, um, what's the, what's the pleasure of the council?
My concerns all along have been, um, it's uncomfortable and very difficult to justify the subsidy that's been requested, and I had hoped over the last two years of discussing it, that, that subsidy dollar figure would come down, that Island Enterprises was asking for. I know that city staff has met and looked into, you know, the proposals and finances and all of that, and, um, their findings were very similar, that, you know, that was a pretty excessive subsidy. And so we've sort of forced into this position of going out to RFP because the subsidy request is so high. You know, whatever the, the actual revenue budget is, you know, whether it's $6 million or 7.5 with grants, I mean, that's somewhere between 11% and 15% of the overall harbor fund, and, and that is a very difficult number to be fiscally responsible with in giving that to a subsidy for the shoreboat services. So the reason we're at the point of the RFP is because the requested subsidy was so high all along, and now we, we needed to force ourselves to go out there and say, "Is it possible that we could do this service with a lot less of a subsidy? Um, could, you know, could we just start over and look at it a different way?" And so I had kind of hoped that we would get several different proposals that would be sort of in line with each other, which is why I'm asking the question of, "Did Island Enterprises meet all of the other points of the RFP? Is the only thing we're talking about is the subsidy?" Um, you know, I don't know if that's the case. I appreciate Kathleen just made several of my comments, of my notes here, that I equally struggle with some of the decisions that the city's made, and quite a few of those were made before our current tenure. So there's not a heck of a lot that we can do there, but, you know, I disagree with how Catalina Classic Cruises came into business. I disagree with them operating for a year and a half without a, without a harbor permit, and I, it's really unfair for me to even comment on that because I have no real history. I only have what you're now telling us, Mr. Stickler, and then, of course, few bits and pieces that you just hear on the street. So, um, tonight is not the, the time to discuss all of those issues. I'm interested to find out whether or not we have to have an exclusive franchise. I think we have been completely beat up by this community on having, you know, multiple providers for every service we possibly can in town. So I'd like for us to look into whether or not we need to have an exclusive franchise. I'd like to look into the opportunity that, um, even if we do move forward with this particular RFP and say, "Okay, we're, we'll, we'll give the subsidy to you guys and let you do it," still allow Island Enterprises to do all of their other, their, their other deliveries. I believe the island company also has the ability to pick up and deliver guests from Avalon and to camps and other areas on the island. So even if we're talking about exclusive franchise here, I mean, it, to me, it seems as though with the decisions that the city's made in the past, where I'm saying that they weren't necessarily this council, they're, they're, they don't appear to be very thoughtful. They don't appear to have looked at the whole bigger picture, and it seems as though we've said, "Okay, this for this, and this for this, and this for this." So now that we're in this position and all of these issues are coming to light, I would like to discuss those going forward. Um, and I don't know if that means that we still move forward with this particular RFP and make some changes to what we actually grant, or if we bring it back at the next staff meeting and, and further educate. I don't know what that answer is. But I, I personally, and we've talked about it for two years, the, the, the subsidy that's being requested at $800,000 is, I, it's, it has not been proven to be, um...
Warranted.
To be warrant, well, warranted, but it hasn't proven, especially with other, with this other proposal coming in, that, that it's got to be that way. It's, it's just too much.
We can't afford it. But I do like your idea, yeah, I do like your ideas on, um, on not, maybe opening up to, to where it's not exclusive, or at least, because I like, I like, um, Scott Rosinko's, um, the owner of Coastal Tours is, is, his proposal here, and, um, the fact that he came under, under the, uh, the allotment that we had, um, budgeted, um, for this year, um, but we, I think we might have other needs in the future, and I think that's why, I think it's a good idea to keep an open mind about, um, and maybe an open door into the future. I mean, if this, if this particular contract here says it's absolutely exclusive and that if we go ahead and approve, um, Catalina Coastal Tours tonight, does that mean that there can be no, no more attachments on with another service, or is it exclusive meaning there are no other service can operate out of the harbor?
No, no. What this means is if this contract is granted for shoreboat services within the harbor, we have one company doing it, that being Catalina Coastal Tours and Fishing.
Understand.
So only they do that services. It does not impact other services, um, that...
City Limits includes, does Cancel Beach and Hamilton Cove?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What's the state lands, or is that what we're talking about? No?
There's like a little drawing that goes out, I think it's 300 yards or so.
Okay.
I, I guess my concern with the non-exclusivity of the shoreboat service is, um, if we've, if we've got people, well, number one, congestion in the harbor, and number two, this competition, and all of a sudden somebody, Benny would come back and say, "Well, they just took $100,000 of my business, and you have this, you have this agreement with me for five years, but now I went, now I've only generated $100,000. So are you going to subsidize me another $100,000 because you've allowed somebody else to come in and take my business?" I, I don't know how that would work, because the money's looking pretty tight, especially when you're looking at $800,000. It's already looking tight for the, to, to tap that without then even, or having to raise the fees, the shoreboat fees, which I don't think we want the shoreboat fees to be raised either.
That's a good point.
Mayor, arguably, the, the reason in the past that the condition was created with the ships in part, in part, is because there was not an exclusive agreement to, that allowed, that allowed exclusively the existing provider to, to, uh, to, to be the provider of that service. Now, the implication, of course, is if it hadn't have been, maybe we wouldn't have had the cruise ship. But, but I mean, but, but so that, and then the question becomes one of the economics to invest in, whether it's Mr. Stickler or it's, or it's the, the, the new provider. Uh, they're making capital investment, they, they cost out depreciation of that investment over time, and, uh, and they, um, you know, they determine what it takes to get a ROI, a reasonable return on investment, and that's where I think that exclusivity comes into play, as you've articulated, and, uh, it doesn't mean though what's got it, I'm here saying, it doesn't mean that there can't be other services provided, and certainly the council has said its desire is to ensure that the, that other business enterprises of, of Mr. Stickler's is, is able to operate in the harbor, and, and we, we, we think that's a, a really good thing, so...
I think, one of the things that isn't here, it's like, but what, that, did I state? That the, uh, wait, I'm going to make a liar out of me, never mind. No, so, so it says that the bottom line, your net was like $28,000, $29,000. What did Stickler say? Was there a bottom line to Stickler's proposal for what his profit would have been?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but it was over $807,000.
It was what?
Over $100. $807,000 to make it a, a even break.
Oh, no, what was his, what was his bottom line? What was his net income going to be?
Uh, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Haley?
Oh.
Oh.
Okay.
That's not a breaking even.
Okay.
I, one of the struggles, I think, is where you're trying to go, Mayor, forgive me, is, um, normally we see all of the proposals and then we, we see the recommendations, so I think there's just a tiny little bit of a struggle because we don't have all the proposals in front of us. So I think that's where some of the questions are coming from.
And I have a question on the period. If we approved, depending on what happens, but let's say we go with, with Catalina Coastal Tours, is that, do we really make it March 1, 2017 as a start date? That's in a week or two?
We need a service, and right now they have, uh, three six-pack boats that they can operate from until they get their boats built and delivered in May or June or whatever it's going to take, but...
Okay, so that's how we, okay, that's, I would, okay.
And part of this $800,000 requested subsidy from the other company is to provide three new vessels? That's to cover the cost of three new vessels, is that correct?
Yes, as I stated before, our, our estimate went up from the original RFP to the $800,000 because of the three new vessels that would have to meet ADA. And, and I use his own number that he said if he has to build a boat that's an ADA-approved vessel, it's going to add $175,000 to his boat, which is probably in the neighborhood of what we're talking about.
So you're saying your, e, e, part of your proposal was three ADA-accessible boats?
Yes.
And this, this subsidy maybe for the first year? You're asking for the $800,000 for each year for five years? This covers...
No, you asked us for a proposal that met your RFP, and in the RFP, we had to provide the vessels. So we gave you the first year because, one, you can only budget for one year.
Mm-hmm.
The next year, you'd have to look at it, you know, we put the depreciation and the amortization in for the, uh, cost of, uh, the new vessels, and what we expected it, it was going to be, I think we went 10 years, I'm not sure, 10 or 15 years, uh, to get the money back. So, and, and the boats are probably, I mean, the amount of hours that you're talking about, you're running boats for, um, you know, 7,000 hours, that's going to be 3,000 hours on each one of the boats that he's talking about, which an engine life is probably between 3 and 5,000 hours, at least what we found on our diesels, because of overheating, clutches, you know, and a lot of the things that a normal boat doesn't get, because you make thousand shifts, you know?
But let me ask you, did he answer your question?
Yes.
You asked, "Is it going to ask for $807,000 every year?"
Right.
And what was the answer, yes or no?
The answer was yes.
Okay.
And further explaining that you're amortizing the boats over 10 years, so that's, you know, essentially $8 million.
Which is in the proposal.
All right. All right, Council, what's your pleasure?
Let me ask you this. I've got another question. If, if there's, you know, I'm not assuming that there would be a deficiency in service, but if there is and we can see it, can, and we actually make an effort to go out and get some transit authority funds, somehow a grant, can, can we, uh...
We should do it anyway.
We should do it anyways, but can we open it up a little more?
Okay, so what...
The service, that is.
It's an exclusive franchise, so for five years, they get to do the services, and they meet the requirements of our RFP, which says, "This is a minimal service you're going to do." They can go above and beyond it, but it's minimal. If we decide in a year from now that the standards set forth in the RFP are not sufficient to meet the demand... are not sufficient to meet the demand, we can grab other funds, or we can use our own funds to modify and expand the services. Again, this is for the minimum services that we are requiring. And if we increase those services, the minimum, because we determined that we need more, then they can get more money, we can add more money to it. And I know Audra's been working, you know, day and night on grabbing the funds, and we're trying to expand and grab some from the MTA, because this is part of a, you know, it's kinda like the last mile, saying the last little bit. To get people here is expensive, and we wanna grab MTA funds for that.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Now, Dave Carlisle, can you guarantee me that these boats are gonna be seaworthy when you have a maximum capacity on them? That they're not gonna tip over, if everybody, let's say, sways to one side? I mean, do you know that for sure?
Yes, sir. Well, you can never know for sure, because...
Okay, I understand, it's the ocean.
I mean, cruise ships sink, right? So, but my point is, we go through the exact same testing, what they call the windage stability, or weather stability, and heeling moments. They literally take all the weight of all the people, they use weights instead of people, move it all to one side, and make sure it meets the stability criteria to not flip over.
Yeah, that's something I'm concerned about, but all the same...
Yeah, and you know what, honestly, if you guys wanna be involved in the building process, we'd love to have you come down, and when we go through these programs with the Coast Guard, you guys are more than welcome to come.
Just like you do with the e-bus.
I'd love to.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I'd love to check it out.
We like the involvement. We certainly invite the involvement. I wanted to touch base real quickly about the two boats only. Scott's concern was two boats may not be enough as well, so we have the option for a third boat. And when he sees the need directly for that third boat, within three months, we can have that third boat operational and tested in the harbor. So there is a gap. I mean, we all understand things have to change, because the current cost to operate shoreboats is high, and neither operator's getting rich. It's pretty much a net zero game, right? We're pretty much operating at a nonprofit, and that's whether the subsidy's eight hundred and seven, or the subsidy's 239. So nobody's getting rich off this. But as I've been explained by Scott, is he is ready to make the capital investment for that third boat if and when the need arises, and we'll be ready to build it for him, and inspect it and deliver it.
Perfect.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
I just wanted to add one other thing.
Yes, sir.
We've been very lucky with our Harbor Toman transporting people back. We're lucky we haven't had a lawsuit against us yet, that I know of. And that just scares the heck out of me, and I think I've been saying this since this all happened. And it just terrifies me that we're transporting people, 80 years old, 70 years old, in those boats. I think we need to put something to bed, we think we need to get it done, and get it done now, and go from there. That's just my opinion.
As a previous tour boat company owner, that is at the forefront of every captain and every owner's mind, pretty much all the time.
That's just my opinion.
I agree with everything you're saying. I just am struggling with the franchise, the exclusive franchise agreement.
Okay, sorry.
Do you have any suggestions on what we might do about that tonight, before I make a motion? Because we can, what can you...
I'm not a specialist in the area. I really don't know.
Scott, what can you suggest here? Because I've got the same slight concern, it's just we're going ahead with something that we, it's an exclusive for something that we don't know we wanna be exclusive on this.
Again, the RFP was for an exclusive franchise. So if you're gonna change that, then you'd have to, you know, you'd have to have an opportunity, frankly, fairly for other, if you're gonna change the RFP...
Shelve this and come back?
Again, if you're gonna change it, because you're changing what we put out and we asked the public for.
Even with an exclusive franchise agreement, in the good days, I mean, it wasn't profitable. So if we go forward without a non-exclusive, it's not gonna be profitable, and our subsidy is just going to be greater for that service. Again, talking about the other stuff that Stickler wants to do, that's all, never ballgame. But I think for that harbor, that harbor's not going to grow. We're not going to have more boats coming into the harbor. It is limited what we can hold. So, I mean, if we were building on a whole new wing with a whole thousand more moorings, or wherever moorings, then I think, okay. But the way we are right now, I just think it's too little, or they wouldn't be asking for subsidies that they, that five hundred thousand dollar subsidy they wanted.
So does this mean Catalina Classic Cruises won't be able to bring cruise ship guests into the harbor anymore? Or do they now get grandfathered in because what happened and the way they got their situation to begin with may not be?
I believe the municipal code excludes the cruise ship passengers from the shuttle service. And it also excludes the 7% for the cruise ship passengers.
Because they're paying a warfage fee, they're paying a different head tax?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that's fairly said, that of course they are paying something.
If I could add a quick comment on the exclusivity question. Last council meeting, there was the approval to have Harbor Breeze get their permit.
That's right.
And Harbor Breeze, one of the things they commented on was camp delivery. So there's, it's already a non-exclusive for going outside of the harbor when it comes to that.
That's true. That's true. We did approve that, and I think we also approved them to carry passengers too, correct?
Yeah, they were just gonna be a party boat kinda charter.
Yeah, but, you know, there was, okay, so, and then the island company's gonna get a big boat, and they're gonna be shuttling people down the coast as well. So how does that affect the exclusivity of what this contract...
This is only exclusive for inside the city limit, right?
Okay, can we get on with this, please? Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive any irregularities in the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Catalina Coastal Tours and Fishing for shoreboat services as specified in the request for proposal released on December 13, 2016, and in a form approved by the city attorney. Authorize the city manager to compensate Catalina Coastal Tours and Fishing with a subsidy in the amount of 239,000 dollars each year from budgeted harbor funds to operate a year-round shoreboat service covering the initial contract period from March 1, 2017 to February 28, 2022.
There's a second.
I have a second.
Moved in second. Any last comments? Call for the vote.
Four ayes, one absent, Mayor Protem Olson.
All right, seven and eight have been pulled, and now we will go to agenda item number nine.
Okay, agenda item number nine is first reading of an ordinance establishing temporary use permits. Let me give a little background of this and how this arose.
And congratulations, Scott. Uh-huh, good luck.
Many years ago, the city adopted its general plan, and part of the general plan recognized that certain areas of the city did not maybe have the appropriate zones for the uses that were there. And so it was the long-term goal of the city to examine all these zones and rezone matters. That process has not been started yet due to just the time and time involved. When the issue of the city CIP program came up, which is what we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be paving the streets, the issue of where to place our equipment came, and the initial thought was we would put them on the Field of Dreams. Unfortunately, when the city attorney's office was asked if the code allowed for that, the answer was no, because it's a resort recreational. So the solution for that, and a problem, would be to allow a temporary use of a property that is not exactly consistent with the zoning code. But if you meet certain criteria, you could allow a temporary use for up to, I think we put, two years. This would be, because you can't just make an ordinance apply to only one property. This would be citywide. We've built in protections that would indicate that if someone wants to do a use, a temporary use, which means no permanent structures, no permanent alterations of land, they could come to the city manager. The city manager could look at the permit, impose conditions of approval if the criteria set forth in the ordinance are met, and issue a temporary permit. That permit would be subject to appeal to the city council. So if the city council doesn't like what use the city manager is temporarily allowing, that would come up to the city council for review. SEQA would apply to any of these permits, so that if there was a required environmental review under SEQA, we would have to either have a, some kind of hearing process where members of the public would be notified about the intended use and be granted an opportunity to speak in favor or opposition of it. So the ordinance before you would accomplish this, several tweaks if you wanted to. The ordinance currently says the city manager or his or her designee, we could take out our designee, so you know that it's just the city manager. Some other comments were we could put a two-year limitation of sunsetting on the ordinance, which means after two years, it goes away. And other comments, we could put in a requirement that when the city manager grants temporary use, he immediately notifies the city council of that, and that we post something on our web to allow the public to know that in case they want to appeal it as well. So these are things that, based on comments I've heard, we can tweak the ordinance. And again, so it's staff's recommendation to introduce a wave of this reading. I know the city manager has some comments on this as well.
The concept of a temporary use is not uncommon in my experience in cities where, or they call them, under redevelopment, they would call them interim uses. So it is not uncommon, and it is not something that you would use arbitrarily. It would, the way the city attorney has drafted the ordinance, there would have to be findings that are outlined on the first and second page that indicate that the types of uses would have to meet the criteria set forth. And this also came up because there was, there are, there are current uses on properties right now that this ordinance would enable to continue, and also allow the city to have a site for its CIP project at no cost. And as opposed to about a $60,000, $48 to $60,000 cost per year. That money, that savings, would then go back into the street project, which needs additional funds. And so it was on that basis, I think, that, and as Scott said, this would not allow permanent structures to be built, it would not allow alterations of the land. If, at the time that the uses discontinue, the land would have to be placed in its previous, to the extent that there's any alteration to condition. And so that's, that's the basis of this.
So I have a question on the first page, number five, all structures and equipment. So in compliance with the municipal code, I would, I hope that that should not be in any way addressing anything that's permanent, and I don't know how, what the definition of permanent and temporary is.
Well, so like, one of these structures that we're talking about here, for instance, is one of the little, usually for major projects, a construction project, for instance, you'll have a little bungalow that'll be like where they'll have the plans and stuff like that. That's the kind of temporary structure, so it's there for the project.
But it's a portable.
And again, what this ordinance would provide is that with each permit, city manager makes the findings, and then we can, city manager can put conditions of approval, so that you will do this, you will do this, you will have stormwater protections. And so right now, what's happening in a lot of areas, people are just using sites that they're just using. This requires them to come to the city, and we can put conditions of approval on, which gives us a little bit more power to enforce the municipal code and city policies.
And I think for the sake of those that might be somewhat concerned, on kind of the litmus test on it being, somehow being advantageous to the city, you know, to assist, that it's there, it furthers the city's efforts in projects and whatever they have going, because I just don't want it to be, and, and it's some kind of beneficial to the... What's that? Look, he's looking serious.
I'm thinking. Oh, yeah. I'm calculating.
Beneficial to the residents of Avalon.
So you're saying, Mayor, if I may, that in granting a temporary use, or an interim use, but he wants temporary, the interim use, that there would have to be associated with a public purpose, and the public purpose would have to be defined.
Quid pro quo, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, and meant in a positive way, quid pro quo, where there's a benefit, a direct benefit to the city and to the public, I mean, not us personally, but to the public, in granting such a permit.
And we could add that to condition number seven, which is the temporary use is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and will provide a benefit to...
A specific benefit.
A specific identified benefit.
Which property, or what do we have to offer here? I mean, what, are we just saying that somebody can set something up in any block on town?
Maybe you missed it. What, maybe you were talking rather vaguely.
Okay, so, again, this would, has to apply citywide, because you can't have an ordinance that targets a specific property, because that's called spot zoning, and you're not allowed to do that. So it's citywide, but anyone who was, wanted to operate would have to come to the city manager and get approval. The immediate need for this is because on the Field of Dreams, which is where the city wants to store its construction equipment for this paving project, it's not allowed right now, because that property is owned resort recreational, which does not allow industrial equipment to be put on it. And so we have to make an exception to that if we wanna use that property.
How come it's been... Yeah, but they've been zoning laws already, right? We already have zoning laws within the city already, right?
Right.
And now we're making...
Well, because where are we gonna put this stuff? In the middle of the road?
We're talking...
What, no, I think the councilman, if I may, I'm really sensitive to what you're saying about what the general plan talks to in terms of land use and appropriate zoning. In this instance, you have an existing use, at least in the instant case, you have an existing use. And it's been a use that we have used in the past, though we don't now. But we have used it in the past over years based upon advice that was given at previous times, in previous years. So, and the ultimate use of this property, which has been identified as housing, housing that will, that is for workforce and affordable housing, but that can't be something that's gonna occur this year. It'll probably take a couple of years to get all the planning done and all the financing done. I would even say that you could, as the city attorney said, if you were uncomfortable, is sunset it. Put a sunset provision that says it's no more than two years unless you reenact it, so that you can evaluate how it's used. Of course, you can evaluate if the city manager is, you evaluate him every two weeks in one real sense. If you don't like what he's done, you know, you can decide that, you know, maybe he needs to go on vacation.
Two years seems an awfully long time.
What's temporary about two years?
Yeah.
No, 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 it's up to.
I know, but what's temporary for a year, temporary? Temporary, to me, would be...
Look how temporary that has been already.
But I'm just saying, what's temporary? Temporary, two years?
Well, to your point, to the councilman's point, maybe, if I may, to the council member's point, Councilmember Hernandez, is then, maybe you said it's subject to a review in a year, where you review, maybe, whatever language that would be, that you review it to determine if it should continue, so that you, so that there's not this lag of time. You can look at the progress, you can measure the progress, you can say, is this the appropriate? Or should we just forget it? Now, we do know that on the CIP project, and Mr. Jake, Jake can correct me here, that that's a two-year project. Is that correct, sir?
No.
No, I mean, we have two phases of the project. But all I'm suggesting is that you could put in interim review period where you could decide something other than this.
So what the ordinance actually says is, it's temporary, you shall identify its expiration date, which will be a date that the use is reasonably expected to terminate. The expiration date shall not be beyond one year from the date of issuance. So it's one year unless there are extraordinary circumstances, which the city manager has to find. So it's one year, and then anything beyond two years has to come to the city council. So it's one year and then anything beyond two years has to come to the city council. We can alter those dates.
Like temporary, a year temporary, that's not temporary to me.
Yeah, I'd say six months.
Or the city manager, or his designee.
Well, we can cross that, right? Or his, that's, we can cross.
I'm trying to figure out, why are we even changing the ordinance? Why aren't we talking about a temporary use permit for that property for the, the, all these projects that the island company and the city wants to do? Why are we addressing it that way?
Because there's no authority in the municipal code at this present time that allows a sign off to, that, that allows a sign off on the use of that property, the subject property. There's no authority under the code. It cannot be done without an amendment. It will not be done because it will not be signed unless there's a, an enabling statute that allows for that, and that's what this does.
And can't we just change the zoning of the property?
It, no, you'd have to go, well, you'd have to, yes, you would have to go back and change the land use, but, but the land use, and you, then you'd have to change the zone. Is it possible you'd go through environmental review and, and yes, I mean, I guess theoretically that could be done, yes.
You could, you
But that would create a more permanent, that would create a more permanent.
Yes, you could do that. You'd have to go to the planning commission first and then to, through the city council. So that would delay it and at least with respect to the immediate use of the CIP, the city believes that they need to start using this property immediately.
We, I think that
We need to do this tonight because they need the property tomorrow. That's basically what they're putting in front of us.
Why, why are we rushing to do this tonight?
Yeah, I don't
Because it's for our, our benefit, for the city's benefit.
Okay, well, I'd like to
I, I don't know, is it for the city's benefit?
Yeah.
We're going to save $40,000, $80,000, number one.
They want to pay us, they want us to pay 4,000 plus whatever a month for that property there, to put our stuff there. And to, to, and the, the housing is not going to be happening for a couple of years. They're using it like that. We, we've been allowing them to do that. We're not kicking any of those people out. We used it illegally, so this is just a way we're, we're making it be copacetic.
So if we didn't pass it tonight, it was the end of the world?
Yeah, I think we should table this item.
We can table it till next Well, okay, hang on, hang on. It's not passed tonight.
Because I don't understand it.
This is, this is an intro, introduction of an ordinance and then in two weeks, you formally adopt it. What our thought was that if the council had approved the first reading of the ordinance with any changes, that we would temporarily, temporarily allow a use subject to the council's final passage of the ordinance in two weeks. If you don't want to do that, again, that's fine. We can continue this, we can, we can, you know, you can come back in two weeks, but in that time period, then we'd have to find another place for the property.
We could, the cemetery, the
Place for what?
For all the CIP projects, staging of our CIP. For all the equipment for the asphalt project.
And I hate to see the city crews try to put
Only put it out in the mall.
Yeah, we, we, well, we're talking about asphalt, we're talking about
Yes.
Where?
We can split it up at the cemetery. There'll be no parking for people there and we can use the upper cemetery. And then we could put some of the equipment at Kid Ventures, not much. The mall, we'd have to put in the parking lot. We can't put anything on the back of the mall, as you know, it's, it's bad.
I need to make two corrections on the cemetery. The first one, where the parking is, that is only, it's not even leased to us, we can use that only for parking for cemetery services. The upper part of the cemetery, the brand new one, is full of stuff right now and we are down to two plots.
Two plots.
So right now, if three people die and they want a full burial, that's not happening at our cemetery and we already have very strict guidelines of coming, getting buried in our cemetery.
Our downhill facilities are completely full. We are surplusing some materials, but that won't happen for another month, month and a half. We frankly have no other places.
Respectfully, can I, can I say something to all four of you, please? I feel like we might be in this dilemma right now because of during my tenure as the interim city manager, the, well, it happened really in May of 2015 when we were no longer using the Field of Dreams as it, as its intended purpose with our lease, which we were only paying a dollar a year. And, you know, and we had been asked several times by the island company, you know, you're not using that for recreational and what were we using it for? To store our floats, to store all of our heavy equipment. And we stopped to use it, utilizing, as you know, as a field because we couldn't do the water to maintain it. Anyway, then during my short tenure there, the island company came to us and said, came to me, said, you know, we really want to utilize it as a temporary staging yard until we can, until we get more water and we can put some housing in. And I, in all honesty, they asked me a couple of times, I ran it by Mayor Marshall there in our weekly meetings. At that time, I was meeting with Randy Harrell every two weeks and by the second or third time when Randy asked me, I went, I better check on, check on the zoning. I didn't even think about the zoning because that's how we had been utilizing the, the lot. So at that time, Al Warrett was our planning director and in no way am I throwing Al under the bus. He did, he told me no, he says, let me look into it and he came back and he told me no. And then I said, Al, is there any way to change anything? How can we utilize that because it will, it will benefit not just, at that time, I think the museum project was going on and you know how it is, there's no place to store anything in town, you can't park it on the street overnight. So Al came back with an idea of using it as a, as a temporary staging yard and temporary was about a two-year period and that's what they were hoping with their wills and for housing, getting off topic here. So with the, the mayor and with the mayor pro tem at a meeting that we had twice, we did say that it was an okay use as a temporary staging yard. Now, I don't remember consulting Scott, I probably told Scott it was happening, but I didn't make it any other thing other than a passing comment. So I feel like we are in this dilemma right now because of something that I did. So I'm hoping that we can work our way out of this and see it as a, a means to an end to get us through our projects, if the Vons project goes through, to any other thing that can happen between now and when the island company puts housing there, whether it's with us or it's just their project, I don't know. So I respectfully ask you to, to consider waiving this reading this evening and introducing it.
But in fairness to, to Ms. Ratti, she was operating on the basis of advice at the time that she was receiving at that time and, and in good faith and, and, and frankly, the solution was one that worked for, for, for the purposes then. The property will not ultimately be used for that purpose, it could not be used for that purpose, but we're in a, we're not going to have a place to put our CIP materials, our equipment if we don't, if we don't have an agreement and we don't have the ability now under the current ordinances, I do not have the authority to do that and frankly, I will not sign something for use that I have, do not have the authority to do.
How much money?
Well, we're saving the
Now, how much money are we going to charge people for these permits to put their equipment there? Let's say Guido's landscaping comes over and they have 10 trucks.
They would, yeah, they are giving, what, what we are getting on this property is we are not being charged the four, it was actually originally $5,000 a month for storage on 150 by 150 parcel. And so we would be saving about six, well, not, not just saving, we would, we would have a site first and then we'd be saving from 48 to $60,000 in, in, in a year for
Are you the only one that's going to make these decisions? I mean, because I think I read somewhere in here, it's the city manager or his?
Designee.
Designee?
I think you should hold the city manager accountable for something that's appealable to the council.
Is that you?
And we're gonna, no, 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 we're gonna cross it out.
Yeah, because it's him or nobody, I mean, him and nobody else.
In the ordinance, we can cross it out and in enacting the ordinance, you can give direction to the city manager that it's your, in your, your direction, that only for that site is this ordinance to be enforced or, or activated.
Okay, so what if
So if the ordinance goes into effect, but, but you're giving him direction only for that site. So it's legal, you have legal ordinance, but
If somebody, if somebody's, if we're displeased with the way somebody's doing their work in town, that, that, the execution of that contract can be voided, right? I mean, we can tell them, get your stuff out, you're on the next barge out.
I was trying to think of any other, I was trying to think of what could be a situation where Guido would come to town and do this. Well, first of all, help me come up with another example. This is, this is where we're benefiting, it's their land. So Guido comes to town, Guido wants to set up something, he's rent and, and it's doing this, Guido can rent space from the island company on that property, just like Jacuzzi is doing, he's put that little, you know, he put the thing there. So if we, if we can only do it to one site, that's even better, but I don't know.
As long as
No, 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 you, the ordinance applies to everything, but your, your direction to the city manager and how he's to
You don't exercise discretion beyond that.
Yeah, this is only for this site. You tell them that.
And let me, then let me answer, address if I, what I understood, if I may, Mayor, a question about what, what if, what if the site is being used in a way that's contrary to the conditions? For example, let me give you a real, let's say that, let's say that fires, the fire station, that equipment is being blocked, it's blocking exit from the fire station on a code three EMS call or a fire suppression call and that that is repeated, I, I, I will assure you that, 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 that end of, that use will not exist because, and, and, and so, and in considering this, any use has to be accommodate what is already there, that is the fire station, Baywatch, it has to accommodate the housing that's there, it has to be something that's compatible with that so that, so that it's safe.
What's the CIP projects that we're talking about here?
Yeah, those, those would be the street repairs, the valves that Mr. Deje, it's those, replace salt valves, it's the electrical
So it's a lot of, it's a lot of equipment?
It's 100, they're, they're going to give us 150 by 150, what, piece of property and he said that would be adequate.
Okay.
Yes, we're playing on 150 by 150 feet. We're hoping we can get it all in there. They're going to have an asphalt machine, a couple dump trucks, backhoes, the stuff they need to park someplace to do this 2.4 million dollar project. They gotta park it someplace.
I'm trying to think of how, how this can, this can backfire on us. And I'm, I'm, that's what, that's why I'm, I'm kind of chewing this over in my mind. Because I've had a few people come up to me during the day and they don't like the urgency that this was put on on Friday, they didn't have time to read it, they're not sure about it, they don't know what this is going to bring into the community, what other kinds of contractors that are going to show up and start bringing all their material and their trucks in and, and there's going to be Johnny jump ups going back and forth here, right by the fire station, by the city hall. We don't know, those kinds of things. The two years is, is like a long time, I mean, for someone to set up shop here, considering with contractors in town, pay absorbent amounts of money to rent spaces already and I think we're putting him in a disadvantage. How much is, how, how are we able to delegate who comes and goes or?
They have to comply with the conditions that are in the ordinance.
And we're the ones that give?
Well, this actually gives us more authority than what we're exercising now because it provides conditions that we can say, no, that type of use is inappropriate because it's going to block fire station exit, it's going to, or it's, it's going to be of a material. So, I mean, we actually, under the ordinance have, I would argue, correct me, we would, we have more authority than we currently exercise now.
Okay, can I read a letter into the ordinance? It's from a person here in Avalon. "I would like to comment on the proposed ordinance allowing the city manager to approve temporary use permits, which could be in place for up to two years. Would it not be prudent to allow for the community input as well as council input and/or approved when allowing an unspecified use permit for that length of time?". Question mark. "How would these uses affect the surrounding property owners or impact the quality of life?". Question mark. "I ask you to look at this item very closely and discuss the advantages and disadvantages of authorizing the city manager to have sole discretion and authority on these so-called temporary use decisions. Please keep the community in the loop for these permits, which could impact our lives for two years and perhaps longer. And again, I appreciate your dedication and willingness to listen to my comments respectfully."
And, and the gentleman, or lady
Leslie Warner.
Raises an important, important point.
Absolutely.
First of all, I don't, I, first of all, and it's not a personal thing, I don't feel personally offended or because it's, it's about
Of course not, no.
On this. What we're dealing with is a current situation where we need some timely action to allow our CIP to go forward. The council can restrict that property, that, the discretion to that property. This was not my first choice. This was not something when we talked about sites, I would have liked to have seen other sites that are made available for our CIP project, for Vons, for storage of any kind. I would have liked to have seen it. That isn't the way things developed and it's not where it is now. So we're dealing with the practicality of, of this site. If we were just restricted to this site, where, where, where we'd like to get the CIP project, we'd like to see when Vons go forward that they have a place to, to, to stage and, and, and put, put a sunset on it, put a, a review in, in six months, put it on a, a review in a year, a six month and a year review, maybe.
Is the city going to be making money for the staff time we put in? I mean, are we going to be making money off these permits?
So
The permit is for us, though.
Yeah, but there will be, there will be other people, there will be possibly in the future.
What, what the
Let's say Vons wants to do some storage over there and they need a permit, will we be able to attach a permitting fee for that?
Yes.
For our staff time that's consumed in there?
Yes.
And also, and also the fact that we, we need to reach out, I mean, because of this, this constituent here, we need to reach out to the public each time we have these projects coming up so that we can understand what's going on because these big projects, I mean, the inclusionary housing has been overlooked, water allocations have been overlooked, dust mitigation has been overlooked, I mean, things that are detrimental to the community, it's prudent for us to recognize what the community is asking for us right now. And they've asked, they've gone to us, it's just today, and they're saying, what, what is this? What is this? And by the way, it says originating department legal. What does that mean?
Because I drafted the ordinance
Okay, where did the original idea come from? Was it, both you guys did, came up with this?
The question was, how can we legally do this? Okay? So we looked at it and we said, the only legal way we could do this without rezoning the property and going through that process was to do a temporary use. So I was asked a question, I came up with a solution, we ran it through our office because other cities do this too. And so then I drafted the ordinance rather than, you know, have Amanda or David do it.
So we have construction material that needs a place tomorrow. Is that what you said? Oh, in a week?
We need, we need a site for this, for our CIP project. Vons will need a site for its construction once they meet all their conditions.
If they do, you know, yeah, if they do, as far as I'm concerned, they're
Yeah, when and if they do.
They're losing, they're losing me real quick.
And so, so there's, so that's, that's, we, there's some urgency and the city attorney in a meeting, I, what I said was, I'm, I do not have the authority to do this based upon your advice and, and is there, is there anything you can think of that would allow, allow this to, this to move forward? And the city attorney came up with what, then you recall, the interim use or the temporary use. But again, my, again, my suggestion is, A, sunset the ordinance so that, sunsetting means it goes out of effect unless you reenact it.
Temporary to me is six months. I mean, I
Well, and, and even our own CIP project, I think, is, is, yeah, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying and, and, but if you sunset it, you either reenact it or you don't and it dies. It means it dies at a period of time, it's a sunsetted provision, it means it dies unless you reenact it. So that, that might be one option or have a review where, like you do with development agreements where
You mean eventually this just peters out and drops off?
Drops off.
Yeah, because it's got a, this is only temporary, right? I mean, we don't want
Temporary two years.
Yeah, the other thing is that
No, temporary needs to go down to at least like a year or maybe six months.
Well, the other thing is what, what, what you could do, Mayor and Council, and I, and I apologize that you're struggling because of the new, the newness, the newness of this, is have a review that in six months, we have to have a review or in three months, we have to give you a review before you, in session, where we discuss the uses, we discuss how it's going and people, if they have any problems or comments, they can address
There's a public outcry for that, so that would be a good idea.
Did anybody discuss where we're going to put this? And I know where we're going to put it, but with the fire department or the chief looks like he might have something to say.
Yeah, well, the fire, yes, I would, yeah, I'm interested to hear what he would.
Work this out and kicked it out, but.
Been a lot of talk about blocking the fire department. I just want everyone to be assured that our station is set up that our first-out engines and ambulances exit out the other side. So that we have the ability to exit out the backside and we do that routinely. I can assure you that we would never jeopardize public safety by being blocked in. So we do have that ability.
And we, we, I've had a discussion that like, if, let's say Vons is going in their own building, that maybe they have to put up some kind of a safety light that when they're going to leave that parking lot with stuff, you know, I mean, do some kind of treatment should be on Vons.
Because they would be in and out. And that would be detrimental, have a detrimental effect on maybe some people that live back here, or maybe the people down here at the end of the street. I mean, you know, we just need to have some sensitivity because the public wants to know. And they know these big projects might be coming up. I mean, they may not. But we got to give the fire chief authority that these guys can tell anybody, hey, get your trucks out of here. I mean, because it might take somebody 10 minutes to get their truck around the corner. These guys need to know if there's a big vehicle that's, that's taking its time going down the street, they need to know about that. So what I'm saying is if, if there's a big tractor trailer park there with sensitive things on top that they're taking very slowly down the street, the fire department needs to know that, hey, we're going to be in route. And they need to.
And your point too is, I think, is that there's certain kind of equipment maybe that shouldn't be in there. And if it's, and, and because equipment doesn't always work and it breaks down, and you never want it to break down in front of any, an emergency call. And our chief said, has assured me in the past, as we've talked about this, that they have a rear, a rear exit of first responders. So, you know, that, that was, that was heartening.
And historically, when they're going to move a big piece of equipment, like typically a crane, if it's going to be a long process, we can actually stage the apparatus on the other side. So even if it broke down in the middle of the street, we wouldn't be blocked, blocked in. And the, and we suggested to the contractors too, that they either start early before the kids are going to school, or wait till that rush after eight o'clock goes through.
Absolutely.
And then start up. So historically, they've, they've been receptive to suggestions or requirements.
Great, yeah.
If I can read some language that may help everyone.
And I think, Dennis, are you, were you walking up here?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, so again, some of the factors that one of the members of the public was concerned about, there are, and there are seven conditions that the city manager has to find, which includes where it is, proximity to other areas, proximity to the other uses, noise, minimize impacts. And what I've put on page, it's approval authority, I've eliminated or his designee, or his designee, so it's just the city manager. After, it says now the temporary use is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and has specific identifiable benefits to the city of Avalon and its residents. So you have to find that. And then most importantly, in section G, which is the appeal provision, this is what I've added, which again addresses some of the comments that I've heard today. Upon the granting of any temporary use permit, the city manager shall immediately notify the city council of the temporary use permit and shall put information concerning the temporary use permit on the city's website. At the next city council meeting after the temporary use permit is granted, the city manager shall report the temporary use permit to the city council and the public.
Okay.
So, and it's going to go up on the web. And then the first city council meeting after, during the city manager points, David or the city manager will say, in the last, you know, week, this is temporary. So.
And it won't actually go into effect until that, that it's discussed at that council meeting. So that's essentially the appeal period. At that next council meeting, is that what you're saying?
We have 10 days to appeal. And, and under normal circumstances, yes, it would not go into effect until the expiration of a, of, of the appeal period.
Okay. All right. So moved.
Oh, and there's one other section. We got this from San Jacinto. So, oh, and, and lastly, I'm sorry, section six, it says effective date. It says effective date and termination. This ordinance shall become effective 30 days following its adoption and shall expire two years from the date of its adoption, unless extended. Which means two years.
Now they come back to the council for the extension.
Yes, yes. It's, 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 it's done in two years unless.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
Yeah. Okay, got it.
And then we got this from the city of San Jacinto. And so in section seven, I left the San, San Jacinto in there, and I'm changing that to asphalt.
Good plan.
Moved in second. Further conversation? Who moved?
I did.
Did you?
Mm-hmm. By way of so moved, after Scott's additions.
So, so, so then the motion would be a motion to introduce in a way of all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon, adding section nine dash seven point 1025 to title nine of the Avalon municipal code, providing for and authorizing administrative approval of temporary use permits.
Ken, if anybody's got a problem with that, I'm going to give them your personal cell phone number. Go ahead.
Call for the vote.
Three eyes, one no, council member Hernandez, one absent, council member.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Now I think we're going into closed session.
Yeah, we have two close.
Thank all of you for coming here this evening. And I'm going to say good night to Tony.
Tony.
Is there, I mean, is there a possibility of holding over a closed session till tomorrow morning or not?
We've got the sexual harassment training tomorrow.
Well, we.
Because we have.
You, you probably have sexual harassment training tomorrow. The only reason I'm saying that is if the winds are blowing, Joey's not going to be able to make it. So he's in Long Beach right now.
Joey can't fly.
I, I, wait a minute. The harbor master can weigh in on the weather.
Okay.
Do you think we're.
There's two sessions.
The attorney's gonna.
Yeah.
This is anti, anti-sexual harassment.
10, 12?
Just discrimination.
I can, if.
Eight to 10 and 10 to 12.
We're all tired.
Okay, none of these items is.
That's calm?
So, please, will we do it tomorrow?
Oh.
Yeah, as long as we post, we continue.
Are we still on? Bryce? Oh, okay.
Okay, so, hang on. If you wanted to consider these two closed session items tomorrow, you have to give me a specific time. And we adjourn the meeting.
To that time.
Until tomorrow at that time. And then Denise needs to post something on the door of the city council saying that these two items will be considered tomorrow at this time.
Oh, man.
I, I.
I gotta work.
Are you going to, are you going to sexual harassment, morning or afternoon?
Probably in the morning.
The morning, 10 to 12?
I'd like to get it done, yeah.
Eight, right? Nine, eight?
Well, the weather pending.
The two sessions are 10 to 12 and 2 to 4.
I'm doing 10 to 12.
And 2 to 4.
10 to 12, 2 to 4.
Brian, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, harbor master.
I'm just making the request that based on any information I know, this could be a lengthy closed session. We've been here for four hours. It's very late. And I believe that we should be doing our due diligence with fresh, clean heads to talk about these two items. That's, that was my, if, if we don't, we don't. But that, I'm just saying.
But let me ask another question. How time sensitive are those two items?
Oh, I'm sorry.
See, that's my point. There's my point. Yeah.
I think, I think the, the one issue is, it's very current. It's a current issue. I, I, and, and then the other issue is, we, we would like to get direction to settle a matter that, 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 that is come to our attention. And we need your authorization to, to avoid litigation of, could, could so.
Now, if the council, I'm, I've got a planning commission tomorrow at 6:00. So if you wanted to just set a time at 5:00.
I have another meeting at 5:00 tomorrow.
Sorry.
Don't worry.
How about 9:00?
9:00.
9:00 a.m. Before the.
We're here. So I mean, staff is here.
Before the.
The other members.
They're here to make omelets. Good Billy left to walk the dog. How about 9:00? That, you're an early bird. I know. I like to get up early. My boys get up at school.
Can you guys do 9:00?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
9:00 a.m.?
I'm up at 4:00.
For sexual harassment? Can, can we make it in time for this, the meeting, unless the meeting is canceled?
Yes.
Okay.
9:00. We'll keep it to an hour.
And can we go directly to closed session at 9:00? Or do we need to open up?
You have to open up and then you go directly into closed session.
Okay. 9:00.
Okay, 9:00.
Okay, 9:00. So then this meeting will be adjourned to 9:00 tomorrow, same place.
9:00.
And it'll be adjourned to consider items, closed sessions, items one and two.
So I don't beat the gavel at this point. Yes.
Because it's continuing.
We will see you tomorrow.
Good night, Tony.
Thanks, everyone.